Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Monday, August 6, 2018 City Council Meeting. We'll start with a prayer from Pastor Hank Rosell.
As we come to you this evening, we're so thankful for your presence in this place. As we gather together as your people, we recognize that all the blessings that we have in such a great community as Watertown is because of you. It's also because of the common bond we share of this love for this community. Lord, even in differences of opinions and different visions, we all hold this same unique thing in that we care about this place that we call home. So I thank you, God, as we come together for unity, for understanding. And Lord, you say in your word that if we ask of wisdom, you'd give it to us freely. We thank you for wisdom and we thank you for this mutual care and concern, even a love, for this community, for each other. We're mindful, Lord God, as these summer days slipping quickly away and turning into a school season, we thank you for the safety that you've given us. God, I thank you for those that you've provided to watch over us, those in our police department, law enforcement, dispatchers, and sheriff's department. But also, Lord, for here in the presence now with our firefighters, paramedics, and EMTs, Lord, where would we be without them? And we know that you've called them to such a task, and it's a great honor here tonight to be a part of this accomplishment, as we recognize they're receiving this ISO certification. It's a lot of work and it's a lot of care and concern that goes into us for this desire to become the best that they can be. And so we thank you for those with such a heart and such a care. God, we ask your hand on the whole meeting tonight. We thank you for all your blessings. We thank you again for this great city of Watertown, for it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, everyone.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Okay. Albertson?
Here.
Bueller?
Here.
Danforth?
Here.
Lalum?
Here.
Manti?
Here.
Roby?
Here.
Solom?
Here.
Thorson?
Here.
Vilhauer?
Here.
Why?
Present.
Thank you. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion second for approval? Moved by Bueller and second by Why. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number two is the public comment period, and this is the point in time which we allow people to come forward and state a concern about anything that isn't on the agenda. We do have a public hearing tonight, and I presume that many of the people in the room are here for that public hearing. If you're here for another reason and you'd like to make a comment, this is the time. Please come forward and state your name in the microphone. Seeing none, I'll move on. Item number three is approval of the agenda. Before I do that, I would like to first remove item number thirteen. Is there a motion second for approval as amended? Moved by Vilhauer, second by Manti. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number four is presentation of insurance service organization, ISO, report for Watertown Fire Rescue. Will you gentlemen please introduce yourselves?
I do.
And also, we have Scott Jungblood, Battalion Chief, also Chris Noldner. These are one of our chief officers, and also Chris is on our ISO committee, along with Scott McMahon, as we'll attest here in a little bit. The dispatching is a part of our ISO, so we invited him here as well. We also invited the utilities. I don't think they're able to be present, but we invited them as well just to come and share this with us, but they were unable to attend, so they also play a big part of this. So, thank you for having us here tonight, Mayor and Council. It's a great honor and privilege to be here and to share this acknowledgement with us. We've been working on this for about eight months, off and on. It's quite a process, and we did a short presentation just to kind of go through it a little bit. But we just received a word that we will be going to Class II on September 1st of 2018, moving from a Class III. This emblem that you have up here in front of us was an approved emblem from the ISO itself, that we're going to honor this great acknowledgement by placing this emblem on our fire trucks throughout the city. So with that being said, I think we'll start the presentation. I will try and keep it short. I think if you have any questions to deal with the slide that we have at hand, feel free to ask it at the moment, and then we'll take a few questions at the end of its general. So with that, Don?
Thank you. Okay, so basically, we wanted to just kind of give you an acknowledgement. What is Insurance Service Office? Basically, it's ISO collects and evaluates information from communities in the United States on their structure of fire suppression capabilities. The data is analyzed using our fire suppression rating schedule, and then a public protection classification grade is assigned to the community. The surveys are conducted whenever there appears that there is a possibility of a PPC change. As such, the PPC program provides important, up-to-date information about the fire protection services throughout the entire country. Now, how the score impacts our community, the PPC does. A community's investment in fire mitigation is a proven and reliable predictor of future fire losses. The statistical data on insurance losses bears out the relationship between excellent fire protection, as measured by the PPC program, and low fire losses. So insurance companies use PPC information for marketing, underwriting, and to help establish fire premiums for homeowners and commercial fire insurances. In general, the price of a fire insurance in a community with a good PPC grade is substantially lower than a community with a poor PPC grade, accounting all other factors are equal. Now, just a little bit about that, some of you are probably going to ask the question, how does it going to impact me here locally in Watertown? Well, I can tell you this, I've done enough research over the last couple of months and over the last couple of weeks, exact, on that question, and it's basically something that you'll have to do. You'll have to contact your insurance agent here locally here, or contact your individual that does your underwriters for your insurance, and they'll maybe be able to tell you that. For example, Aberdeen just went to a Class III within, excuse me, Class II within the last year, and I visited with a couple of the chief officers up there. They stated that they've seen some substantial changes in their insurance premiums for homeowners and commercial businesses. McKinney, Texas, is a city of about 130,000 people. They just recently changed from Class III to Class II three years ago. They did a study a year after that, and they determined that there was 11.5% reduction in commercial insurances from a three to a two. It resulted in about $5 million of savings in insurance premiums in that community. So it is a substantial number when it comes to the ISO score. Okay, so we talk about a little history of our department when it comes to ISO. Previously before 2011, we were a Class V, and we did an audit evaluation in 2012. We were a low, excuse me, a high Class V, and we moved to a low Class III. In 2013, we determined that we needed to do a research committee for our department, identify what impacts the ISO scoring, and we identified some areas that we could improve on, and the committee was started. A couple of these individuals are here tonight that helped with that as well. In 2017, last fall, we started that process again of our annual five, or excuse me, our five-year ISO evaluation, and it was just completed here in June. I do believe the mayor received that letter around that time, correct?
Yes.
So how does it work? Basically, in a nutshell, we talk about the public protection classification scoring matrix. A Class I, obviously, you have to get a score of 90% or better. Class II, where we're at, we scored an 81.99, so we have a low Class II, but we did make the Class II rating. And you can see there's 10 different ratings, so you can go all the way down to Class 10, and it's between 0 and 10. And typically speaking, those are going to be probably your volunteer agencies that score those reflectively. So we talk about some of the scoring that's out there across countrywide, and there's many of them, thousands of fire departments that are scored by the ISO. Class I, you can see, has a 241. Class II has 300, excuse me, 1,324. As such, I'm not going to get into all of them, but you can kind of see the chart here that identifies the different types of ISO fire departments across the nation. So we talk about some of the data when it comes to the ISO. We basically look at where we scored at. As you can see, being one of 1,324 across the nation is quite the honor for the city of Watertown. South Dakota currently has two Class II. We'll become the third one, obviously, and there's one Class I in our state as well. And one piece of data that I thought was really interesting that impacts our department is 89% of all structured fires that the city of Watertown Fire Rescue responds to is contained to a room and content. And that's pretty significant when it comes to protection of our overall objectives for our department. Our overall objectives for our department is life safety, incident stabilization, and property preservation. And ultimately, most people don't know, but when you have a fire, it's a significant impact to those people that lose their belongings. And our guys do such a great job when they get on scene to save everything they possibly can, and when you can contain it to 89% of a room and content, that speaks volumes of our fire department, and we're really proud of that number.
And that's for 2017, that data?
Now, when we talk about the scoring matrix, there's three categories that the insurance organization does their evaluation audit on. One of them is emergency communication. It's a score of 10 points out of 100. Fire department's scoring is 50 points, and water supply is 40 points. There is a bonus program that just started here in the last couple of years in their evaluation process, and they give us bonus points for fire prevention, fire investigation, and also public education out there as well. Now, here is our score that reflects the public protection classification. This was basically the summary of our score. As you can see, in communications, they have emergency reporting, they have telecommunicators, and they also have their dispatch circuits. And look how awesome they scored. They got a 9.84 out of 10, which is fantastic, or actually, the 9.86. The fire department's scoring process is a little bit different. It basically derives from engine companies. It comes down to rescue pumpers, pumper capacity, and just speaking on the first two there, engine companies, it identifies how many engine companies we have. As you can see, we scored quite well on that one. We get into reserve pumpers. We did pretty well on that one. We got a .43. And what they did there is they actually gave us credit for engine two, because we're going to be receiving our new truck, I don't know if you guys know that, in August here, and they were able to grade us out just a little bit higher with that. And as you can see, getting that 81.99, that .43 was actually a significant score for us. And then you get into just a couple of other ones here. We look at deployment and company personnel. As you can see, we scored a 5.46 out of 10 and a 6.99, or 6.96 out of 15. And I'll kind of speak specifically on those here in a couple of minutes. The credit for training was kind of a good score for us as well, and what that consists of, everybody, is company training for, we have to come up with about 280 hours of training annually for every firefighter. And that's sometimes difficult to attain, but it derives from company training, facility training, host tower training, officer training, hazmat training, USR training. So it's a different number of hats that staff at our department have to get to that training piece, but we scored quite well on that one as well. And if you look at it, we scored basically in that 35 out of 50 range in our fire department's score. Get down to the water supply, and obviously, this is impacted by your utilities, they did quite well, a 37 out of 50. It identifies hydrants, identifies, you know, the supply for the hydrants, and then also the hydrant testing that goes along with that as well. So overall, we scored an 81.99 out of 100 points. They actually gave you little points for divergence, they give minus that, and that's a form of an algorithm that they use to determine what our loss is on some of those categories as well. So, any questions on the overall score? Yes, Al?
Don, can I ask, what was our shortcoming on the two points where we did the deployment analysis and the company personnel? What's our shortcoming there, because we didn't score all that well on those two?
I actually have a next slide to kind of touch on that, so, great question. Anybody else on the overall score?
And I just have one comment. On the training, the 7.42 out of nine, that's specifically, it's a lot of documentation of our training. We do a lot of training. We weren't very good at data entry and making sure we're collecting all of our training hours. I still think we've got a little ways to go, but my point is, the vision that we had as a department, as a community, and the help of the City Council, we were able to build that nice training center out there, and we've done some nice additions to it. We had the community behind us, and we just got the burn tower up and running. And what a great asset for our department to be able to go out and train with wildfires and stuff. And I'd like to thank the community and the council for your support on that project, because that's why we got to 7.42 out of nine, so.
And one other piece that I'll touch on is our data management. A couple of individuals up here sit in our advisory committee. I think some of you have seen some of our software that we have. That's a really great tool to be able to identify the shortcomings and also the areas that we're maybe a little strong in as well, so it's important to be able to share that data with everybody in our council. Okay, this kind of just shows how we deploy to a fire scene. This would be just a standard 2,000-square-foot family dwelling home. And when we arrive on scene, the NFP 1710 wants us to have an engine company there within four minutes or 240 seconds. And the initial full alarm assignment basically means that within eight minutes or 480 seconds, they'd like us to have X amount of people, as you can see here, 15. Well, that's kind of where we fell down, Glenn, on company personnel and deployment. We're a little short in those areas, and we'll continue to be short probably for, you know, a couple of years to come yet. But those are areas that are being addressed through budgeting and through business plans for staffing. So those are something that we continue to work on, and it's a challenge to meet those. Budgets, obviously, are going to be the biggest issue with those things. But as you can see, it takes a lot of people to have a clean and safe fire ground when it comes to protecting our community. So, any questions on the initial full alarm assignment? Yes, Mike?
Don, on the personnel, you got the number of personnel, and then you also talked about your response times.
Yes.
To what extent are the response times affecting your number? How are your response times in comparison to the four-minute and eight-minute that you were referring to?
We have to meet a 90 percentile number for four minutes for first due engine. We do quite well with that, with one engine on scene. We fall down very, I'm not even going to give you the numbers on that because I don't have it right now. I know the numbers are pretty low, they're below 30 percentile when it comes to 90 percent, trying to meet that 90 percentile. We're at that 30 percentile number when it comes to meeting that eight-minute, 486-second response with these individuals. So we can count myself and Doug to these scenes, but if we can't get there within eight minutes, that's how we continue to fall down on that deployment and company personnel. And I will tell you that we're not the only city that falls down in these areas. There's other cities that, you know, fall down on this piece as well, so. Do you have something to, Doug?
No, I think it's, the next slide might help out with some of that. This is Station 1, is that correct? Yes, downtown station. So you can see in the red dot in the center is Station 1, and the gold, if you will, colors aren't the greatest, but gold is 0 to 1.5 miles.
Street miles.
Street miles, yes, that's driving miles. And then the yellow is 1.5 to 2.5 miles. The red is 2.5 to 5 miles. And what we, those red areas are some of the areas that we look at, that we're having the longer response times on our deployment and stuff. So we also noticed a lot of growth out, you know, industrial parks and stuff out there. We got some red areas, and I want to say we don't have that exactly in front of us, but you're talking about an eight to 11-minute response to a lot of those red areas out towards the interstate from Station 1.
Pheasant Ridge Industrial is probably in that 10 to 11-minute mark, as far as time out in that area. Station 2, just kind of shows it a little more in detail when it comes to where the red is. I apologize, the colors are not coming out here as well as we'd like it to, but the Station 2 is the orange gold, like Doug said, is that 0 to 1.5. Red is, excuse me, the yellow is supposed to be the 1.5 to 2.5. Anything thereafter is 2.5 to 5, and anything in the black area is going to be in that five-mile response area. I'd like to thank First District, they actually put these together for us, they work well with us. We do a lot of work with them and collaborate with a lot of different things. They're actually putting a Station 3 area up for us as well to determine what the street mileage is for us in the area that we have kind of identified. So with that, I'll just kind of show you kind of where we're heading at in the future. Obviously, in our long-term planning, we have a fire station in 2023 that we've been looking at. This is kind of where we are going to put a stake in the ground at some point. Obviously, there's still a lot of work to be done for our station committee that we have at this station for research as far as identifying it. As you guys can see, where Station 3 is going to be at, I can't really point that to it, but I think most of you guys can see it's on the east side of the city there. It's about two blocks, or block and a half to the east of 19th Street, in the First Avenue bypass. We have some city land there. I think Mayor and I and Doug have kind of looked at that as an area of origin that we want to probably look at. So, and it is city land, correct, Sarah? Mayor?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, so we see the one-mile radius and the two-mile radius is in purple, and as you move those up or down, you can kind of see where the gray lines are in the city limits right now. So with that station, somewhere in that range, we pretty much take care of a lot of the city limits and have pretty good coverage. We are just over a mile from the interstate with a pretty good shot of getting out there on the extension, but it's, somewhere in that area would be a good spot. We also notice that on that end, we're currently running about 600 EMS calls. We also notice a daytime population out towards that interstate with the industrial parks growing and stuff, so we have a lot of population out there during the daytime. So I feel those calls on EMS and fire will continue to increase, so.
So this isn't something that is an accredited piece, but is a pretty significant opportunity for our department to grow and work with the city and provide the citizens of our community with wonderful fire protection. So I think with that, we'll entertain any questions from any council members.
Anyone have any questions? This is remarkable, and so it's really awe-inspiring. I hope that the community recognizes how fortunate we are to have such a well-trained and professional staff, and in addition to our great infrastructure too, to support our defense in case of fire. So this is really a great thing for our community, and I'm very proud of the fire department. Let's give them a hand. Good job. And you guys look great in your uniforms.
Thank you very much, Mayor. We also have something that we want to present to you, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay, this is an acknowledgement with approval from the ISO for the city of Watertown, the vision that's helped us achieve this great accomplishment, and so it's an honor to present this plaque to the mayor and the city council.
The next item on the agenda is second reading of ordinance number 18-14, amending district boundaries by rezoning 218 19th Street Southeast from PUD planned unit development to R3 multifamily residential district. And I think we have a great deal of people here, so I'm not going to ask for a motion yet, but we'll let Brandy give her presentation, and then I will open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the rezone request, the second reading of public hearing for the property just north of St. Mary's Cemetery along 19th Street. I can get down to the map here. So currently, it is zone PUD, which is a planned unit development, and the petitioners who are David and Leslie McElhaney are proposing to rezone it to R3. And that came from Plan Commission. They recommended going forward with the rezone instead of presenting them their development plan for the PUD, just basically because what they want to use it for is multifamily residential. So it means that they're not asking for any flexibility, which is why people generally use PUDs if they want to have more greater flexibility on the land or structures, that they have everything planned out, and Plan Commission has to approve everything, it has to be very detailed. So since they weren't quite there on their, with their development, then to just go forward with the rezone to R3. And then as you can see, the adjacent zoning designations, it is consistent with what's to the north, which is R3, and then there's A to the south, which is the cemetery, and then part of the cemetery's land is still in the county, so it is not zoned yet in the city or annexed. And then R2A to the west, and then C3, which is highway commercial to the west as well. And 19th is also a collector route in our street plan, and R3 with multifamily residential is also consistent with what our comp plan shows. It actually shows this area as economic, as future economic development.
Okay, thank you. And the purpose of the action tonight is to decide whether R3 residential multifamily is the correct zoning use for this land. The purpose of the action tonight is not to approve any specific development plan, it's to determine whether or not the requested R3 is appropriate in this location in our community, and it is consistent with our comprehensive plan. So with that, I will open the public hearing, and I see quite a few people here. I received a petition with over 150 signatures on it, and I would like to read what that petition says, because it's really not addressing what the city's action is tonight. The petition reads, "We, the residents of Watertown, South Dakota, along 19th Street Southeast, between Highway 212 and Kemp Avenue, petition the City Council to vote against the building of excessive numbers of multifamily units at 218 19th Street Southeast." And I'll read the rest of it. "The addition of 144 apartments will create traffic safety issues for individuals accessing 19th Street in this area. There are existing traffic lights at 19th Street Southeast and Highway 212, and 19th Street Southeast, and Willow Creek/First Avenue Northeast. Additional lights or stop signs between these two points will interrupt traffic flow and jeopardize pedestrians, children, and bicycle use. This extreme number of units will create traffic safety problems for years ahead. With a high-density population of 144 units in this..." With a high density population of 144 units in this small confined area with one exit point, safety of lives relating to evacuation of these residents in case of fire, natural gas leak, flooding, tornadoes, et cetera, should be a great concern. The Mayor and City Council have fiduciary responsibilities to protect the safety of residents accessing 19th Street as well as evacuating apartment dwellers in times of crisis. We request the City Council to reject the building of excessive numbers of living units in this area." And then there were a very large number. I don't have the exact number of signers, but it was great. The numbers were great. But the council is not considering tonight the building of 144 units. The City Council is voting upon whether residential multi-zoning is appropriate next to the residential multi-zoning to the north and the commercial zoning to the west. So that's really the question. And we don't have that many zoning classifications for apartments. Apartments can be built in a commercial zone or they can be built in an R3 zone. That's pretty much it. If you were to zone this R2, then you can get, you wouldn't be allowed to build very many units. Or if you did R1, it wouldn't be either, but this area has been identified in our comp plan as economic development and apartments do fall within that classification. So this is not the time to consider how many units are built. This is the time to consider if multifamily residential zoning is appropriate for this land. If that is passed, then the owners of the land have to go through the building permit process to present their, what they'd like to do. And if it meets all of our ordinances, the council has no authority to deny their request, but they have to follow all of our rules. And the PUD zoning that's there, that was a challenge. The PUD zoning is like a building permit. With a PUD zoning, you can only build exactly what was specified. So they had a planned unit development specified for which the zoning was applied and approved and they were unable to meet the city regulations for approval when they came to get a building permit. And so they've discovered that that won't work. The PUD zoning is inappropriate for this location, so they're opting to change it. They could change it to another PUD zone or they could change it to a generic residential multi-zone. And like all other R3 zones in our town, the property owner is entitled to develop as long as that property owner complies with all of the city regulations. So I want everyone to understand that the council is not approving a 144-unit apartment complex if they approve R3 tonight. All they're doing is saying this land is appropriate for residential multi. And then the property owner has to prove that they can do it in conformance with all of our regulations. That's not the question tonight. So with that, I will open the public hearing and I would ask that, I want to hear what everyone has to say, but if you have the same thing to say as someone who's already said it, please refrain in the essence of time. We would like to get through this tonight. And if you have a comment to make that hasn't been made, by all means, come forward. Otherwise, please keep your comments to two minutes or less. So whoever wants to start, go ahead and come forward and state your name in the microphone.
My name is Gloria Young and I do live on Second Avenue Southeast. And yes, I understand what you are saying, but we are also caught in a dilemma. We aren't saying we don't want an R3 zoning. But if you do approve the R3 zoning, it's my understanding, we don't have many rights after that. We don't have the opportunity to protest. So what I'd like to do tonight is let, since many of us are here, give you our reasons for why we don't think large units belong on this particular location. So if you are willing to bear with us, I would like to give you my comments. Luann Kosher has a letter from a resident who's not able to attend. He would like his voice heard. There are other people here in the audience that would like their voices heard too. So if you would like, if you would just please bear with us, let us give you our side of the story and then you can tell us how we can be protected. We would like to tell you what we would like and then you can tell us what type of zoning is going to cover our needs. So if I can go on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, we are aware of the proposed zoning to R3, but we are here tonight to tell you why building 144 units off of 19th Street is wrong for the residents and wrong for the City of Watertown. And I will describe the neighborhood, discuss the petition results, plus traffic and high density issues. And we do have other residents that want to speak beside me. Across from the proposed building site to the west side of 19th Street is Runnings Sunrise Estate Apartments consisting of 36 units, 52 single homes and a small number of twin homes. On the east side of 19 are three condo buildings with 36 units total, four-plex and twin homes totaling 20 units, Willow Creek One Apartments with 34 units, three single homes and Watertown Family Eye Care and Family Dental. None are even close to 144 proposed apartments. In fact, the total is currently 181 units, which is just a bit more than the proposed parcel or proposed apartments for one small piece of land. Now, a committee of six individuals took a petition to the residents just mentioned minus the Willow Creek One Apartments. Due to their building security system, we were unable to contact those individuals. Now, the survey focused on increased traffic safety and the safety for those living in the large complex. The survey was calculated on number of units plus individual signatures. A unit is one apartment, condo, twin home, single home, or business. Forty-two percent of the Sunrise Estates signed the petition. We were only able to reach 15 units, but all signed the petition to my knowledge. Seventy-seven percent of the single homes signed the petition. Eighty-six percent of the condos, four-plexes, and twin homes signed. Hundred and fifty-six signatures were collected from the 152 units. Now, interesting comments were made by the signers. One comment was heard so often, I will address it in a form of a question later. There were suggestions of a better location such as south of Walmart or 14th Avenue and 23rd Street. I heard a need in Watertown for two-bedroom, two-bathroom, two-car garage housing as rentals. But heard over and over was disbelief that the city would entertain an apartment complex for this size, for this location. There are strong reasons for opposing the high number of apartments. Number one, 19th Street runs from Highway 212 to 169th Avenue. It is a busy street because of its direct access to Highway 212 where people shop. It's a major street in our city where sizable areas yet to be developed. With more development to come in the years ahead, it does not make good sense to create a traffic nightmare today at Highway 212 and 19th Street. Rather than making piecemeal decisions, long-range planning by the city needs to start today to assure smooth traffic flow for years to come. Number two, two of our committee members did a traffic count during morning and evening rush hours for three consecutive days and one day of lunchtime traffic. The daily average was 3,186 vehicles during these seven hours. We think that's a lot of traffic. Number three, the distance between Highway 212 and First Avenue Northeast/Willow Creek is one-half mile. Within this short span of space, there are 14 private driveway entrances plus four streets, Kemp Avenue, Kemp Place, First Avenue Southeast, and Second Avenue Southeast. Yes, there is a turning lane, but with the addition of 144 apartments accessing 19th Street by those living and working in the area will become exceedingly difficult. Apartment dweller cars waiting to turn left into their new complex could be stacked a long distance in the turning lane, preventing residents of the Sunrise Apartments and Condo Building One from accessing the street. It could back to Second Avenue Southeast too. These 144 apartment dwellers will impact Highway 212 also. The entrance exit to Carl's Appliances is just a short distance from this major intersection and oftentimes has four or five cars waiting to turn left onto 19th Street. Four additional cars to the turning lane will create problems for this business. If this apartment complex is approved eventually, the traffic problems are forever as there are no good fixes. Number four, during the years of 2015 to 2017, there were 19 traffic accidents at Highway 212 and 19, of which eight involved personal injury. With additional, with the addition of 144 apartments so near this busy intersection, we can expect the number of accidents to increase. It was announced Saturday on Radio Today that the Veterans Administration outreach will be relocating to the SNAP Fitness Center on 19th within a year or so. They service 3,000 veterans and this too will increase traffic. Number six, with increased traffic on 19th Street, the response time of emergency rescue and ambulance vehicles will increase and lives will be lost. Number seven, because there are no designated crosswalks between the current stoplights, pedestrians, especially children with mothers or mothers with children, the handicapped and elderly will be at risk crossing 19th Street. Nor are there sidewalks to walk to the stoplights and then cross over. In the event, number eight, in the event of emergency evacuation due to the high density of people with access to only 19th Street, lives could be lost due to panic and congestion. What do people, what do the people who signed the petition want to see on this site? We are not opposed to three or four apartment buildings with six or eight units or four-plexes. We want housing that will complement the existing area. We want open space with green grass. A maximum of 36 units could be accepted so long as the look is appealing and welcoming when driving past. We want to be proud of our area of town as should the city officials. To summarize, today there are 181 units accessing this area of 19th Street. Add 44 more units when Willow Creek Two opens up. Add another 144 for the new apartments proposed. We have 369 units. Many units will have more than one vehicle. All will be accessing 19th Street from 14 driveways plus four streets. We request the City Council to hear the voices of those signing the petition and understand the negative impact that it will have for all who live along this half-mile section, for those using 19th Street, starting a mile or two back, and all visitors to the city who will witness congestion and the undesirable high intensity of people in one small area. The Mayor and City Council have fiduciary responsibilities to protect and keep its residents safe and to provide well-thought, long-range planning of the city streets. Before I go any farther, I would like, with your permission, to have Luann Kosher read a letter from a resident in the area that has different types of feelings than I have mentioned. Is that okay?
Luann can speak, but I would like people to limit their...
Mine was extra long.
Yes, yours was extra long. So if you said, before you continue your, are you done?
Well, I have, I want to go back to the issue of making certain that as residents of Watertown, that we are protected. When you are talking about changing the zoning, you now know that we don't want large units, a large number of units on this particular piece of land. So I would ask you, what zoning would protect us from having a large number?
Well, the zoning that would be required to do what you thought was appropriate is R3. That's the only residential zone that can handle what you are proposing, that you thought would be acceptable. R3 is the correct zoning for that and that's what they're proposing. Aside from that, they'll have, every individual has property rights and the City Council has no authority to restrict any individual developer from doing what's lawfully allowed by our ordinances. You may have a beef with our ordinances and that's a different conversation. The correct use of this land, if you think it's apartments, that's R3 and that's what they're proposing. So you're putting the council in a position they cannot respond to and I don't want you to feel that they've acted inappropriately by approving the zoning that you think is appropriate.
I have also been told that this very same large complex could be built on the current land using the current PUD zoning.
That's not true.
That's not true.
Not at all, no. The current PUD zone is only good for the development proposal for which it was approved. A PUD is like a building permit. You can't take a building permit for a hospital and build an apartment complex with it. The PUD zoning goes explicitly for exactly, and I'm talking about how many units, the shape, the color, the type of siding, the driveways, everything is specified in a PUD. And they were unable to build that in conformance with our regulations when that was approved. So we already know that won't happen and they gave up trying. So this is a new proposal. R3 is probably the correct zoning if I'm hearing what you're saying. Apartments are appropriate there. It's up to the developer to prove to the city that they have followed all of the regulations in their design, but that's not the question tonight. The question tonight is what is the zoning, what zoning district is appropriate for this land? And we don't have that many different zoning designations. You can see most of them right there. R1 is single-family residential. R2 allows duplexes and four-plexes by conditional use. R3 is apartments and commercial also allows apartments. There is commercial across the street and we do have a long-term plan. It identifies this as an area that's appropriate for economic development, which includes apartments or commercial.
Perhaps we should be looking at R2 zoning for this land instead of R3?
You couldn't build a six-plex in an, or a 36-plex or a 12-plex.
Okay.
In an R2.
But at the goal of the community or our area, we, none of us would be disappointed if they were twin homes as opposed to a four-plex or an apartment.
But the council doesn't have that question before them tonight. They have, the question they have before them is R3 residential multi, the appropriate zoning for this land? And they could build four-plexes in there, that would be legal. They could do that. But they could not build a six-plex in an R2. And that, the question is not to the council, should this be an R2 or an R3? The question is, should this be an R3?
Okay.
It would, it would also be, I'm going to add, it would be different too if the adjacent zoning was R1, single-family residential, but because there is multifamily residential and commercial adjacent to this property, that's why it's appropriate and especially it's also, it's on a collector route, which is 19th.
So it is incumbent upon the property owner or developer to show that they've been able to meet all of the city regulations and that's difficult to do. They probably... Um, they, they probably can build more than a six-plex. How about you have more than a six-plex next door? So, I mean, what is, what is correct from the city's perspective? The first step is, what type of land use regulation should be applied here? So if Luanne wants to come up and read her thing, should be an okay time.
Thank you.
No, this letter was given to the committee that was working on it. I was asked to read it. It's addressed to the Watertown City Council and Honorable Mayor. Last week, it came to my attention that an out-of-town builder proposes to build two seventy-two unit apartment buildings on the property of budding St. Mary Cemetery on its north, north boundary and facing Nineteenth Street Southeast. It was my intention to appear before you in person this evening, but a health problem prevents me from doing this. He goes on to introduce himself. I am sure because of my advanced age, many of the councilman and mayor are not acquainted with me. I'm going to summarize this in, out of respect for time. Lifelong resident of this community, graduated from high school in nineteen forty-one, military World War II, doctor of medicine, returned to Watertown because of my roots of one hundred and thirty-eight years. Returned to Watertown to raise my family, practice medicine. For the last twenty-five years, I've lived in Skyview condominium at one ninety, Nineteenth Street Southeast. A few points of concern I wish to mention, obviously, that two buildings of one hundred and forty-four rentals seem excessive. The single point of entrance and exit to this area may, at high-traffic hours, poses a real traffic hazard. A single street with a thirty-five minutes, thirty-five mile an hour speed limit and a short distance from Highway two twelve will dramatically increase congestion. There is no other rental property adjacent to the building site on the east side of the street. All of the condominiums and fourplexes are occupied by owners, no rental property. The proposal will definitely lower the value of these properties. Another concern, there appears to be a definite problem of snow removal from the property and the potential for inaccessibility in a case of fire. Raises the question, a proposal to build a few fourplexes on this property was rejected a few years ago because there was no provision for, quote, "a settling pond," end quote. Whatever happened to that requirement, there's certainly no provision for this in the current plat. I've watched all of the development on other adjacent properties. It's been done with care, with the quality of life is preserved. One hundred and forty-four apartments of relatively low rental crammed into the proposed property will bring all of its attendant problems and will seriously lower property values and quality of life. I've enumerated only a few negative aspects, aspects of the proposal, and I hope that after serious consideration, the council will see fit to reject the proposed project. Stanley W. Allen Jr., M.D. Thank you.
Thank you, Luanne. Is there anyone else that would like to make a point that has not yet been made? Please come forward.
My name is Rich Thomas. I don't live in the area, but I am the sexton for St. Mary Cemetery, which is just to the south of this proposed area of development. I'm not here on behalf of the church. Um, I'm here on behalf of myself, and I'm opposing the change in the zoning for this particular parcel of land. Because, and I know some of you were on the council at the time, when this land was purchased and this PUD, um, labi, labeling or zoning was given to this parcel, I remember McElhaney's wanting to develop this piece of land, and because of the cost of the drainage there and that kind of a thing, um, they were never able to make this cost feasible. Um, now, with this idea of putting in, uh, a developer purchasing this land from them, changing the zoning to R three, which I'm sure helps the sale of the land, which they've been unable to develop for a number of years, um, changes the whole scope, and it puts the City Council, in my opinion, in the position of helping a private party sell a parcel of land so that with the number of units that are being proposed on that land, becomes cost feasible for the developer. I know that the city does economic development, but I don't think that's the right economic development for that particular parcel of land, considering the size of the piece of land. What they proposed at the beginning when they bought that property was more upscale-type housing that was going to go in there. But because of the cost of meeting the city ordinance requirements, they've been unable to develop that piece of land and make any money at doing it. Now, the city is faced with this proposal of changing the zoning, which is in compliance with the land that surrounds it. I understand that, but so is PUD. Okay? It just requires a different kind of development in there. R three, once you do that, these people that live in that area, including the cemetery itself, have no basis of opposition, because that allows the developer to do everything they want to do as long as they're in compliance with city ordinances. Right?
That's true.
That's right. You're not there to oppose the number of apartments that are there. That's up to the developer and what they need to put in there in order to make any money. And I think that's the wrong role for city government, or any government, to do that at this point in time. They bought the land, they got the PUD designation for that land, but now because they can't develop it, they want the city to change the zoning so they can sell it, so it can be developed. And I don't think that's the role of city government. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Is there anyone else that would like to speak about this issue? Please come forward and state your name.
Hi, City Council. My name's David Curtis. I live on, on Second and Seventeenth Street, and I live in the area. I'm going to make it real brief. It's just more of my opinion of the, the zoning, the way it is right now. Uh, nobody in here, all my neighbors that I've spoken with, um, are against having multi, multi-type buildings there. What they're more concerned about is the, the number of residents and the number of, um, people that are going to be in that small little area. I've been a law enforcement officer for thirty years. I retired from the Highway Patrol and worked for the Sheriff's Office here in Connington County. One of the things that, when Mrs. Young came to talk to me, one of the things that concerns me is the possible crime rate. Okay? I'm not saying that that's going to happen. I'm just saying there's a possibility with that many people and affordable housing, I'm thinking the crime would probably increase in that area. If you look at the people that live in that area right now, in those duplexes, then most of those people are retired people, older people, and they're quiet. I'm thinking if you have one hundred and forty-four units in there, crammed in that small little area, you're going to have a lot of trash, noise, and crime. Plus, I'd like to say that the nearest, if they do have a multi, multi-business there or multi-apartment complex there, the, the children, for one thing, and I don't know if it was brought up, but the children in that, that multi-complex, what's the closest park to that, to that complex? The closest one is just to the west of us, which means they're going to have to cross Nineteenth Street to get to that park, looking at that as a safety issue. So my concern is that, is I don't think anybody here in this neighborhood has a problem with having an apartment there, but I know that you can't, you don't have any say on how many units are available that, that could be placed there, but we're looking at it at the worst-case scenario, just so you understand. We're looking at it as the maximum number of people living in that little area, and I'm looking at it as a crime aspect. I've always been watching my neighborhood, and I continue to, and I will continue to. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward?
As far as the park, too, we do, we just did have a dedication of park along Willow Creek to the east.
Go ahead and state your name, sir.
I'm Alan Swan. I live on Nineteenth Street in the unit one, two hundred, uh, Nineteenth Street. My concern is, first of all, the traffic problem with that going to any kind of traffic coming in. The, before I get to that, I'd like to ask one question. The notice we sent out, was sent out to us about the, uh, about the hearing, it said the first reading on July sixteenth, and the second reading of ordinance and public hearing, and, and the council action on that. My question is, has the Planning and Zoning Commission already given action?
Yes, they have.
Without hearing objection?
Oh, they had a public hearing as well.
Well, it wasn't a public, no, it's a public hearing.
It was. That, that notice covers both public hearings at the Plan Commission and the City Council, and all the dates should be on the form.
All right, thank you. My, my question then is, uh, why would the, why would the, uh, C, uh, the zoning commission approve it before the public hearing?
There was a public hearing, and the Plan Commission makes a recommendation. They're not the acting body. The City Council takes final action, and they consider the recommendation of the Plan Commission.
All right. I thought there's, thought they took action and to recommend that.
They did.
On Thursday, they're on that letter. It says-
Nineteenth.
A public hearing to be held in the chambers on Thursday, July nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at four fifteen P.M., and that did take place, and they did recommend approval.
Okay, thank you.
Unanimously.
My, my concern, first of all, is that, uh, that, uh, putting a, another large unit next door to our unit on two hundred, I'm, I am concerned that, that you look at the drawing that they finally gave out, what they're proposing to put in there. I have some questions regarding that, and I, whether it's been approved or not, I don't know.
It has not.
But they-
They have no development plan approved.
And when-
I was told it's already been approved by the Fire Marshal and everything else.
No, um, I met with this gentleman, and that site plan was only given when they were going for the PUD, um, when they needed to give their intent for development. That's where they, um, had that plan out there, but that has not been approved. It hasn't been formally submitted. The building official and Fire Marshal have preliminary looked at, preliminarily looked at it, but they have not approved it. Um, they need to wait until the rezone would be approved.
The drainage is what hung up the last, the, the PUD that was approved couldn't swing it with the drainage requirements. So the same drainage requirements will apply for any development on that land.
But I'm looking at it with, they've got the drainage ponds or retention pools, or whatever you want to call them, right next to the sidewalk.
They haven't been approved. They haven't even been-
What their drawings show that.
Their subject's changed.
And my, my concern is, you've got a hazard, and if you've got children in that area, you've got an extra hazard water getting to the hazard.
I understand. I, I share those concerns, sir, but that's not the question tonight. So let's, let's try and keep the comments pointed at, what is the appropriate zoning for this area? Should it be residential multi or not?
I think it's inappropriate from the standpoint that the traffic control problem, you have a tremendous amount of traffic going from there to the, uh, uh, Fitness Center. All of those new buildings that are, buildings going in all feed into Nineteenth, and you're just going to increase that much more traffic, and I'm saying that's a problem I think we should consider, and I respectfully request the City Council to turn it down due to the traffic problems that would exist by making it a, a unit that would be a multi-sized unit.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? And unless you have something different to say?
I just want to, since nothing has been approved, and we're here to approve the zoning change, what is the normal process? Let's say tonight you do approve it to R three. What's the next step for this complex that's being discussed?
The next step would be for the owner to provide a plat and get the land described by plat, and then after that, they can get a building permit, so they would apply for a building permit. And in applying for a building permit, they'll have to prove that they have complied with our drainage rules, just like anyone else, and, you know, that is what hung up the PUD that was abandoned. The PUD plan was approved, but it had to comply with the drainage regulations, and they couldn't make it work. So they did not build the PUD that was proposed. There wasn't enough room for the drainage. So, I mean, if someone can do one hundred and forty-four units with all of the required parking area and all of the required drainage retention on that lot, the council would not be able to, um, say anything about it. But that's the same rule that applies to each and every person. We have individual property rights, and the council has to balance those with the rights of the people adjacent. So tonight, the question is, are R three, is R three appropriate in this area? It's not our one hundred and forty-four units.
So what I hear you saying is, you may pass it to R three tonight. The new builder, developer, never has to come before the City Council. The residents living in the neighborhood will never have another, another opportunity to oppose this. It'll just sail right on through, provided the new developer passes, meets all requirements that are now in place. Is that correct?
That is correct, and if, if you don't think that's right, then you don't have a beef with this development. You have a beef with our general regulations in our community for zoning, and we don't have a lot of tools. There are three resident, there's four, actually. You can do manufactured home courts, or R one, two, and three, which is single-family, duplex, and apartments. That's it for residential development. If you're proposing that only up to a fourplex be allowed, then that would be R two. Anything over a fourplex is R three. If you're okay with a six-plex or something similar to the north, that's R three. And then it's incumbent upon the landowner to prove they can do it in conformance, but I'm repeating myself, which I asked you not to do, so I'll stop.
Okay, so an R two would include, um, twin homes and fourplexes?
Yes.
Fourplexes by conditional use. They'd have to go to Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
There would be a public hearing for anything over a duplex.
So it, from what I hear and what I understand, it would seem that the residents that live, that have been petitioned, it would be in our best interest if the zoning was changed to R two. That would limit the number of units in that space.
If, if what your use is to the north, if you guys rezoned R two, if you rezone to be R two, um, we do still find it appropriate as a stair step to go R two, R three, but even if these fourplexes, they would have to go in front of the Board of Adjustment to be able to have a fourplex use.
And that would be acceptable, I would think, to us?
If you guys, are you wondering if you, if you guys would rezone? Is that what you're?
No, she's talking about having the council pass R two on this property instead of R three. And so that, you know?
Yeah, I mean, what, they're, they're petitioning for R three, which is what the adjacent property is.
Okay, okay. I guess that's what I'm saying. I think our group of individuals would prefer R two zoning versus the R three, knowing what we know now.
Okay, and, and the council could take that action tonight if they cho, they can't? They could say no to the R three, and then it would have to come back for R two. They could make that recommendation, but they couldn't pass. That's a substantial, substantial change to what's proposed.
I think we would appreciate it if you did not vote on it tonight, take it back for reconsideration for an R two, and then- for an R two, and then vote on that the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that has a comment that hasn't been stated? We're, we're running really long here, so please try to honor the two-minute limit. And if, if you want to stand there, we need to hand you a microphone.
The only thing I want to stress is the fact that I don't know where the traffic is gonna go. But I, I live on that street.
What is your name, sir?
On Nineteenth Street.
Could you state your name? Into the microphone?
Sidney Scotten.
Thank you.
I live on that street, and I can tell you that, uh, if everything is being built, that our people are talking about, I'll never get down that street again, I guess, without maybe getting a horseback or something, I don't know. But I'm serious about that, that, that there are just not enough room for that kind of traffic in that area.
Alright, thank you.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Darcy Curtis. I live on Seventeenth, I'm only a couple blocks away from the project. My concerns about the situation is that, you know, all on the council, look around this room. These people, if you notice, are mostly a retired crowd. A lot of them have mobility issues. This subject means enough to them that they got out tonight, came here because they have concerns, very viable concerns, and a lot of them are on the same lines. And it makes sense, because I live in that neighborhood, and I look at it from a mom's point of view, is if you're gonna build a large apartment complex, whether it's thirty-six or whatever, the idea being is that, yes, a new, um, park has been designated on Willow Creek. So, what, the kids are gonna walk across Willow Creek to get to the park? Or they're gonna play human Frogger across Nineteenth to get to the park on my side of the street? There's, there's just so many logistical issues with this that everyone has concerns about. I think it's something everyone needs to take into account. Like I said, these people didn't get here easily. It obviously concerns them, and then look at the, the number of names on that list. That's only a fraction of the people that have these concerns. These are your voters, these are your taxpayers, and have legitimate concerns. So, when you take this under discussion, I think, think you need to, again, take a serious look around the room, and at that list, and realize that people have very viable concerns that need to be taken into consideration before a vote takes place. So, that's it.
Thank you, appreciate that. Anyone else? Okay, we have another.
Good evening, uh, my name is Nate Stensel. Um, we are the potential developer of the project, um, and I just wanted to say a few comments, um, as I gathered the information from the concerned residences. Um, you know, they're, they make valid points, I understand all of them, and I, I am, um, I, I am, I, it is good to hear. Um, in reality, uh, we've, we've built fourteen of these exact buildings in six different communities throughout Midwest. Um, not once have we had a site that's actually bigger than what we're proposing to do here. Um, we do these in phases, so the first phase would be a seventy-two unit building. We're not gonna come to town and put up a hundred and forty-four apartments and, and hope that we hit the mark. Um, we do these in a phased project, so the first phase would be along Nineteenth Street, the second phase would be on the backside. We're, we're also, you know, we want to be good neighbors, we want to be aware of the issues we're creating within a community. Um, we need to get the first building up, evaluate the traffic situation, um, on our own property as well as onto the street, so we are, we are considerate of that. Um, but in reality, the, these are not affordable, um, units either. Uh, these are very, um, they're market rate apartments, they're very safe. Um, I personally, in other communities we live in, or work in, have actually lived at our buildings. They're very quiet, people come, they, they, they come and they go, you know, not many times throughout the day. They go to their work, they come home. Um, they're very quiet buildings on the inside and on the outside. We do not see a lot of children living in these buildings. Um, in fact, uh, throughout the, through Phase One, we have twenty-three two-bed units and forty-nine singles. Um, so, it's, it's, even if both phases were there, we're talking a hundred and fifty-four potential people living in the two buildings. Um, we're not talking about a, a huge amount of traffic generation between the two phases, and especially not with one, not just with the one phase. Um, so I'd like to point that out. Um, but, but they are, they are very quiet, very safe buildings. We do not have a lot of issues. We self-manage them, so we'd be aware of that. We're on top of the garbage situation, the maintenance situation. Um, if we have people that are causing problems in our buildings, we remove them. Um, so, I, the reality is, is we've looked at a lot of different sites within Watertown, um, and this is the one that stood out most to us, because we like the location, we like the arterial street it sits on, close to different retail, um, opportunities for our tenants. Um, it, the reality is, it's a great site for multifamily. Um, I do understand their concerns, and, and we will be, um, aware of them as we move forward with the future phase, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there anyone else? Alright, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and look for a, a motion for approval. I have a motion for approval by Danforth, second by Vilhauer. Is there any discussion?
Mayor?
Councilman Albertson?
Colin, just as a point of reference, is there anything that you see, I mean, that thing that comes out loud and clear is this traffic issue? Do you see any way that that can be resolved? Is there any way that we can have traffic move toward the north? Right now, obviously, there would be one way to get out, in and out, and that would be on Nineteenth, then three thousand cars, a lot of cars in a day. Is there anything that you would see as an engineer that could make people feel better about this?
The only way is probably to have access onto a different road. They're still gonna have to use Nineteenth Street, one way or another. Um, even if they were to go out on the east side of the property to the north, they would still be hitting Nineteenth. Um, I, I don't, I don't see it. I don't see another alternative for the traffic.
There is an easement on the lot to the north, over on the east end of the, the property to the north has an access easement right there where the arrow is, which is almost at the east end of this parcel, which could be used as a secondary exit out, if necessary. And that was there because of the PUD was required to have, um, a secondary outlet.
Fire ingress and egress easement?
Yeah. Councilman Danforth?
A couple questions. I think, Mayor Annett, I believe that was a grassway easement, though, if I remember right? That it was for ingress...
No, the easement that's reserved there is for ingress and egress.
But a road couldn't be placed there, correct?
No, it doesn't specify that.
Okay, I thought it was a, a, a grassway easement, but...
That might have been what was required in the development plan, but on the plat, there's land reserved, so that could be utilized.
Okay. The question I have is, is sitting in their shoes, you know, we, we have our ordinances that will talk about height of a building and, and setbacks, and we'll talk about parking, but what consider, this is a little bit of an oddity here, because it's, it is one road in. Uh, I have not personally seen anything. I, I, before I got Gloria's email, I wasn't aware of anything in regards to what was going in there, just what had come before us, what the request had changed to an R three. Um, but what consideration should we be taking with traffic? Our ordinances don't talk about traffic, and traffic congestion, and issues with traffic.
Well, they do when it comes to subdivision, and if they, this is a parcel, and it is already a subdivision of the outlot, which has quite a few. Once it's platted, that's the opportunity, the, the plat comes before the council, that's the opportunity to talk about access and roads. If it's a single lot, and they have bought a road, that meets our requirements, but you could, you know, potentially ask to see something developed to allow a secondary access out.
Well, you know, I've heard a lot of different things, but if I cut through everything, the, the traffic, like Dan was mentioning, that's, that's the issue. It seems to me like there, there, we do need to have some type of consideration on, when we make decisions for zoning, on what's going in there, when there is a possibility or probability for problems. And this would be, in this case, it would be traffic congestion as is a concern. That would be my concern, as I look at this. We, I, I think of the other things that they've talked about, um, those are builder, those are, are landowner rights that they have. Uh, but when you get into the traffic issue, that not only affects those people that are, are living there, it affects those people that are around there, or use, in this case, Nineteenth Street. So, I think we do need to take into consideration what, a hundred and forty-four units and, and, Mr. Stensel had said a hundred and fifty-four people, I'm not sure where that number comes from, but, um, assuming a little over one in, in each apartment, but, um, you know, that, that could be a problem, and if it does become a problem, how do you fix it?
And as I said, we do address that in our preliminary planning stages. This did not go through the preliminary plan in our three-phase concept plan, preliminary plan, plat. This doesn't have an approved preliminary plan. That's kind of what a PUD is, and you could send this back to the Plan Commission. Preliminary plans are done at the Plan Commission level, and traffic is a consideration of a, approval of a preliminary plan, as are road layouts. But this was not presented as having any road in it. It was a lot, and one lot adjacent to a public road already. The utilities are there, the road's there, and so it's, it's kind of a stretch to force them through the whole subdivision process and do a preliminary plan for one lot. And I, I think that they might be considering two lots. Um, I don't know if that's still the thought. Um, then there would need to be a road if they didn't buy the road, and that brings up a, another opportunity for review. But right now, we're not talking about the development plan, we're, we're talking about the zoning, and, um, this is in our comp plan, identified as an area that should be for, reserved for economic development. So, if you think that R three is appropriate, then you would vote yes. If you think that that's going to generate too much traffic, you might want to vote no.
Well, and here's where I'm at. It is absolutely appropriate for R three from the standpoint of what we would typically see in an R three area. It would, it would absolutely be R three when we talk about how we want to develop and transition from commercial areas to, into residential areas. So, it's, it's perfectly set up for that. But when we have one lot that we don't have a say on, and this is, this is an oddity, because we don't have very many three-acre lots, or whatever this is, five, five-acre lots that get sold for development in town for residential areas. So, it, unto itself, it is an oddity, and I'm, I'm leery of the traffic issue myself, I really am. And I mean, like I said, if I knew there were gonna be duplexes or fourplexes, what was, let's say what was gonna go in in the PUD, perfectly fine with that. We could do this, and there may not be a hundred and forty-four, there could be two hundred and ten units in there if they can fit them in there. We don't know, and we won't have a say, and that is what concerns me, is one way in, one way out, and the number, that, this, the, the compact nature of it, all related to, in my mind, the traffic. So, I have that same concern, um, as what these individuals do here, I really do.
Thank you.
I will agree with a lot of what Mike said. The question I have is, there will be opportunities to address that through the process, will there be?
Not necessarily.
Well, but the Planning Commission gets, gets another swing at it?
No.
The plat, the plat will come forward.
If, yeah, when they, that's true. When they plat, they'll, um, that will come to the council. I could do, I could allow an administrative plat, um, but right now, we're not doing administrative plats, which don't go through the council.
And they are, what they have proposed right now, it would create two lots, and then to, so, to provide access to the back lot, they would have to do a private road, which needs authorization for the mayor to sign that private road agreement. And then also, so, what would come forward would be the plat, and then the development agreement, as well as the private road agreement. So, and then that plat will show easements, and where that private road is going, ingress and egress of their parking area, um, detention, and, just the, the easement that we, they would be granting for the detention pond. Um, and then that also does show that fire access ingress and egress, um, up in this northeast corner.
So, the plat would have a development agreement that you would have to approve?
But wouldn't necessarily have a road included to get another access into it or out of it?
Well, if the council wanted to specify that, you could do that at the plating stage.
At the plating stage?
You could approve a plat on condition that secondary access is provided up to Second Avenue, so...
I, okay. Again, agreeing with what some of the things Mike said, I think R three is the right designation, just about on the way we, we do our zoning in the city. I think R three is correct. I also think that with the attention on this issue, that I, I think the traffic element will be watched pretty closely if this goes through. And there, but, there will be an opportunity, if something comes up where we say, "That just doesn't make sense", there will be an opportunity to address that.
Right, the, the problem with our process is that they don't necessarily have to come forward with a development plan before they plat. Now, they already have come up, they've been very straightforward about what they want to build there. So, you know what they intend to build. Um, they could change their mind and, and come forward with an application for something entirely different, and they'd be within their rights to do that. But when the plat comes forward, you know what they have in mind. If you think it's too much for the traffic on Nineteenth, and would be offset with a road requirement to the north, um, on the east end, then you could make that requirement at that time. And I think that that's probably, um, you know, judging by the number of people that care deeply about this, you might want to seriously consider that. Councilman Lawton?
Um, I was looking at this, I'm trying to look at the few, uh, units that are over there, One Willow Creek, Two Willow Creek, things like that. Um, their lot sizes, for Two Willow Creek is one point seven six three acres, and One Willow Creek is one point five five nine acres. Um, this is five point one five, while I was just doing some quick math. Um, the five point one five, if you take the same amount of units that are on Second, on Two Willow Creek, it's a hundred and thirty units, so it's not like they're that much more per square footage of the actual lot size, it's just they happen to be...
They have more road access. They've got east and west out.
Well, they could have potentially a, a north exit on the east side, so, I mean, really, you're talking some of the same things. Nineteenth Street is meant to be an artery road, it's supposed to be a collector road. Um, and, and since we're talking simply on zoning, which is what we're voting on tonight, R three is, is what it's supposed to be. I mean, you have R three to the north, you've got R three to the northwest of it, you've got commercial to the west of it, and then you have A, which happens to be a cemetery, but you have highway commercial. I mean, that's what they're built for, is to go, you know, steps of zoning.
And to, to zone this in conformance with our comprehensive plan, you would either choose R three or C three.
Yes.
Residential multi or commercial.
Which both allow for...
Both allow for apartments.
That type of, of building, so...
Commercial has more uses.
That's what, that's what we're voting on tonight. It's, it's not what they're pointing up. Unfortunately, the, the bundle of rights, which is what people are allowed to have as homeowners, as landowners, you, you have those rights. I mean, what we're trying to do is infringe on their rights to build something, which is not what we were elected to do. I mean, our job is to do what's best in the city's interests. I understand, I do not disagree that there's gonna be some traffic issues, but that's not what we're here to vote on. We're here to vote on the zoning. That's what's allowed. That's what we're here to vote on. I don't, I don't discount the, the traffic by any, any stretch of the imagination. Nineteenth's a busy street, anyway, but when that was Walmart, it was busier. You know, now, Runnings doesn't have quite as much traffic, you know, I mean, those are, these are items that have come after the fact. Walmart was built thirty years ago. You know, Runnings took it over fifteen, eighteen years ago, so, I mean, those are items, you know, the units that are built around it were after some of these, some of them were. So, we, we have to look at what's best, based on the zoning requirement they're asking for.
And it's, you know, you should have a, a pretty good explanation to go against the comprehensive plan recommendation for this area if, if you would choose to do that. Councilman Villahar?
I've got a few questions. The first one, I'm not sure who to direct it to, and maybe it's not a fair question, but maybe I'll direct it to you, Brandy. Can you give us some perspective? What, what would be the, the density of the number of people living in the PUD versus what we're looking at now? Do you have any, any feel for that?
Of the previous proposed PUD? I believe they were doing, they were proposing 22 duplexes, which was 44 dwelling units. And the reason why they went with the PUD was they wanted a longer cul-de-sac length and then that their cul-de-sac radius would be, I believe, smaller? And then that the rear setbacks would be less.
So you're saying 44 units and probably, you know, two people per unit?
Yeah.
Okay. Just trying to get perspective as to what the difference would be versus the R3. Okay, second question is, I know, obviously, traffic is a big issue. I'm not disputing anybody's numbers or their thoughts on traffic. But I mean, I know we, we've got engineers out doing traffic studies on a regular basis. I mean, what, what is the, the expectation as far as capacity for Nineteenth Street? I mean, I, I, again, not discounting what people are saying, but we must have some feel as to what that road was designed to handle as far as traffic. I know 3,000 a, a day sounds like a lot, but maybe it was designed to handle, you know, 4,000 or 5,000. I, I, and I'm not hearing that. So I, so I can't really place an opinion as far as a traffic issue. Does anybody have any, you know, Colin, I'll look at you, being our acting city engineer. Any thoughts on that?
I would have to refer to the mayor. She knows Nineteenth Street a lot better than I do.
The most recent traffic study that, we do have an area transportation study that the city has adopted. It considered this as economic development and it found that Nineteenth Street is appropriate there as an arterial, which it is. That's the classification of that road. And it is built to handle that.
So when you say arterial, I mean, give me.
That's the highest level of local street that we have. Then its current classification is the highest level without a highway.
But, but as, but as far as number of cars that, that would handle.
Oh, the number of cars. I don't know those off the top of my head.
Okay. Third question then is, I know this was addressed at the Planning Commission meeting. I, I believe our, our Fire Marshal addressed this. I mean, are there, and I guess we've got a good representation from our Fire Department here. Are there concerns as far as, you know, appropriate access in the case of a fire out there with what's planned? So I'm not sure unfairly maybe address it to Doug or Don if you want to take that?
Yeah, so obviously, with, with the traffic concerns, it would be nice to have a secondary access. But the way the, the plan was presented to, moving this far forward to this point, the buildings itself had adequate enhanced fire protection systems. And it also, the, the parking lot could handle a turnaround of a, of a truck. So with those two things, the, the Fire Marshal's recommendation was it would not require a second entrance to that. And that's about what I know of. Is that correct, Don? Is there anything else I forgot? So we did look at that as an area of concern, but with the, the current ordinances for fire protection, it would qualify. Obviously, traffic is not something we, we really look at. So it was more or less, can we get trucks in there and put out a fire and safely? So, and it didn't meet those.
Any other Councilmen to add for?
I'm a strong advocate of ownership rights and, and whoever owns this property, I, I believe they should be able to develop within their, their, their right that they have to do that, with exception. And, and I'm going to go back with the public safety question here. What is the solution? Now, we heard that this is going to be done in two phases, which may or may not happen. Could happen all in one phase. We don't, I mean, we could be told. But what happens if we have a congestion problem? I really am going to call it a congestion problem versus a street capacity problem because it's a very distinct point on Nineteenth that you would have a problem with, which I think is different than all of Nineteenth and its carrying capacity. So what's the solution if we have a problem other than to live with it?
Well, there really isn't a solution to that other than the owner might struggle to rent or sell units there if it's just impossible to get in and out. And that's, you know, shooting themselves in the foot to create something that isn't livable. And that's not our judgment call. That's, that's private enterprise in, in the process. Our job as the community is to make sure that all of our regulations are followed. And we should be following our comprehensive plan or giving good, strong reason to deviate from it. And we should be enforcing all of our regulations.
Mayor, is it doing us any good? And I know Mr., is it Stensel? Is he here?
Yes.
What's, Mr. Stensel, what's the, what's the urgency of the requests that you have to go to R3? From your, is it the, is it the acquisition of the property or is it the, get a shovel in the ground?
Plan Commission actually recommended.
I understand.
Yeah. Well, our, what we're trying to do is just move forward, start a project. Our goal is to start this project in the next 60 days, not next spring. So we want to keep things moving forward so we can do a project.
Well, my point in asking that is if, if this request, I'm not, I'm going to use the word tabled because we are going to pass it, fail it, or we're going to table it in some manner.
Sure.
To allow for some discussion about how do we look at these concerns and potentially try to find a solution amongst all of us that might be win-win for everybody or lose-lose for everybody, either way you want to look at it, so that we all have their considerations in place, yours in, in place, and to see if there are some things that can be done. I don't know what that would be. But I do have, I do share their concerns. I live on Nineteenth. I live north, but I do have those concerns as to, as well, so.
Well, I don't own the property right now. So I think, you know, reality is if, if this takes so long and we don't start a project this year, we might not ever do the project. You know, I mean, there's a lot of pressures on multifamily construction right now. The market, the market study tells us that there's a need here and we can help provide that. I'm sure that need would be here in the spring. The problem we're fighting is, is that inflation in the construction markets has been running rampant. Our cost goes up dramatically every year and I don't see that changing. And interest rate pressure. So just between those two things, if this got pushed into a winter season and we got pushed to a spring, I'd say there's probably, you know, probably less than a 50% chance that we would actually be able to pursue this in the spring. We're kind of at a tipping point with the economy right now where tariffs, interest rate pressure, labor shortage are really making these projects difficult. And they're especially difficult in smaller communities that don't have, don't have a lot of rent growth, such as Watertown and other small communities we work in. So it's very important to, to, once you get these things moving forward, to keep them moving forward because there's so many elements outside of our control that would have a dramatic effect on the viability of these projects. Then the cost to pursue them is very expensive. You get, you get drawings going and engineers and everything else. So that's from my perspective. I don't own the land. You know, my perspective is to kind of hit our dates and keep things moving forward. We need to know where we're at. We don't have the pleasure to sit back and.
Would, what would two weeks do to you?
Uh, well.
I know it's last time.
I don't know what Mother Nature has in, you know, stored for us this year, so it's really, really tough to say. I mean, we're, we're planning to move forward. As far as sitting back and doing the talks, the hard thing about multifamily, because I sit in front of a lot of councils, a lot of planning commissions in a lot of different communities and I, and I, in a lot of neighborhoods. You know, no one wants it in their yard. They don't want it close to them. They don't want to buy to, you know, buy their, their housing, whatever it is. You know, they kind of build it up as this, these huge buildings that have all these troubles that come with it. I think the valid, the, the traffic could be a valid point. I personally would want to see that. Nineteenth Street's a big street. We're not talking about a lot of traffic pressure here. So, you know, that, that's just my two cents. I mean, I think if this was in a different area, then there's going to be a different group of people that don't want it close to their house either. That's, I mean, I've been around this my whole life and that's, that's just the reality of the situation.
Thank you. Councilman Matty?
Yeah. This is such an emotional issue that what I like to do is I like to try to take and find actual statistical information that relates to some of these issues that we're talking about, including traffic and property values. And the study is very prevalent right now that large apartment complexes do not lower property values. In fact, in some cases, they actually increase property values. In terms of traffic, it typically, a single-family home owns more cars than an apartment dweller. So now you're looking that there's average of two cars per household in a single-family home versus one, I'm reading from a transportation engineer's study in the apartments. So if I'm looking at these different statistics that go by weekday, PM, AM, PM, peak PM, Saturday peak hour, Sunday peak hour, basically, on weekends, a single-family detached house generates 42% more trips than does a unit in an apartment. The difference is even greater on the weekend. 58% more trips on Saturdays and 50% more trips on Sundays. The large difference is seen not only in the totals, but also in the peak hours, morning and afternoon, weekends and weekdays. By measure, it is clear that single-family houses generate more automobile traffic than apartments or any other type of housing. In explaining why single-family houses produce the most traffic, the Institute of Transportation Engineers noted that they are the largest units in size with the most residents, but also pointed out that they had more vehicles per unit than any other residential landowners. And it goes on. But I, I tried to find a fact that would help us take a little bit of the emotion out of the traffic issue, and I hope that does help, so.
Thank you, Beth. Appreciate that. Other comments from the council? All right, we have a, a motion to approve the proposed R3 zoning on the floor. And a second. I'm going to ask for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you for your input. It is greatly appreciated. Item number six is authorization for the mayor to sign a two-year airline transportation system lease agreement with Aerodynamics, Inc. And I'll look for a motion and second for approval.
So move.
Second. Matty and second by Lalum. All right, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. I will actually pause for a moment.
We're going to try it. And we have a wheelchair. We have to try it.
Let's get back to business. Okay. I've opened the public hearing for the two-year airline transportation system lease agreement. And I'll let Todd tell us what this is about and see if, after everything settles, if there's anyone else that wants to speak.
Good evening. So this is for Aerodynamics, now bought out by California Pacific Group. So this agreement will be with California Pacific, doing business as Aerodynamics. I'll let Matt Robey discuss how this goes.
Uh, well, the last communication we had from Mickey, were you, were you on that email? That he said leave it as Aerodynamics? Okay. Well, the agreement, what, go, the agreement will be with Aerodynamics again for this two-year term because apparently they're, that entity still exists.
Okay. At any rate, this is the airline flying in and out of Watertown, per the DOT, the two-year contract that the DOT awarded.
And it's very similar to the last one, right?
It is, correct.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else want to speak about this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. Are there any, is there any discussion? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Mayor, did you want to discuss the, the $1 billion now?
Uh, at the end, I was, I suppose, we could, it's not on the agenda. Can I talk about it now, Mayor? It's old business. Well, kind of.
What's the?
The RFP. Yeah, he probably wants to go.
Yeah, we put it under, I mean, it's not on the agenda until old business, so.
Can't really.
Okay, so next meeting?
No, at the end of the meeting.
Oh.
The rest of the stuff should go pretty fast.
All right.
Sorry, Todd. Okay. The next item, we did take action, right? Okay, the next item on the agenda is the first reading of ordinance number 18-07, amending zoning district boundaries by zoning Mansell addition southeast of Sandy Shores to R1 Single Family Residential District. And there's no action required here, but I will let Brandy explain this.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I know I'm up again, but hopefully this one doesn't last as long. So this is, you've, you all have seen this request before. This is for the annexation and zoning of the property just lying southeast of Sandy Shores on South Lake Drive. Why you're hearing it again is because previously they were proposing to annex 5.8 acres. And then now they've decided, and mostly because of the Sioux Rural Water settlement, that they have to pay $8,900 for anything under 35 acres. So they decided just to go with their whole property and annex it all at once so they weren't faced with that fee again. So then now they are proposing to annex and zone 12 acres and the zoning designation will be R1 Single Family Residential.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Councilman Villahar?
Well, how does the bike, the bike trail fit in now? I mean, I know we're accepting cash in lieu of any park designation. What about the bike trail? Because that, that will be going right, right by that.
Yep, so the bike trail will still be within the right-of-way on the north side of their property, on the south side of South Lake Drive.
Already planned to be in there, even if it wasn't annexed. Councilman Lalum?
Brandy, will they be able to split this land and sell it off then if this gets annexed into the city? And what are the minimum lot sizes they'd be able to do?
So with R1 Single Family, the minimum size is 9,000 square feet. And as a condition of the annexation, we are requiring a plat come forward where it, if, if they aren't dedicating any right-of-way or any public improvements aren't needed and they aren't creating more than five lots, it can be administratively platted. So they, they can subdivide.
Are they going to have to get that? Do they have to get that out of the zone, or out of the flood zone then? Be able to sell those?
To be able to build on it.
Just to build, so.
There's no requirement for.
We're not, yeah, we're not requiring them to move it out of the flood zone then, correct? Okay.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Brandy.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is authorization for the mayor to sign a Prairie Lakes Wellness Center sponsorship agreement with Trav's Outfitter Incorporated. And I'll look for a motion and second for approval. Moved by Vilhauer, second by Robey. Uh, discussion, who, let's see, Matt, would you like to talk, or Glenn? Glenn.
Uh, this is the, uh, the next one to come now before, uh, this group regarding, uh, sponsorship arrangement at the Prairie Lakes Wellness Center. This has been approved, this is Trav's Outfitters, obviously, uh, has been approved by Prairie Lakes. Uh, it was, uh, our little committee of Mike, Don, Bruce and myself have looked at it, uh, given it are okay. Uh, Matt, I believe you looked at it from a legal standpoint. Um, I guess I have nothing more to say. Other than, do you have a question now? Maybe I'll address to you, Matt. It's got an effective date of commencing August first. We're past that, does that impact, does that need to be pushed back or any comments along those lines?
Uh, yeah, there was an email, were you on the email that Ryan had sent?
And I, I don't remember what, what the, 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 uh, end result of that was.
Um, Mike had asked what, what that's going to look like if, since we're approving it after the first and nothing is up yet, um, that'll be up to, uh, to Trav's essentially, if they want to take some more time on the backend, or if we modify the agreement. So I would suggest that we approve this with a, uh, the understanding that, uh, the date may change to September first, if that's what Trav's, Trav's chooses.
Okay. Just to clarify, Mike being my, my fair child out at-
Yes, excuse me, yes, yep.
Um, with that, I, no other comments on it.
Kristin?
I just want, um, before when we had the couple other sponsorship agreements come forward, we had the discussion that when we continue to have these come forward, um, I would ask the council if they want it to be operating, or if they want it to be going back into the building, um, fund. So I'll kind of let you guys have that conversation. The last couple that we've done that were these types for the sponsorship, we've put them into the operating, so.
That would be my recommendation again with this, uh, subject to what my colleagues say up here.
All right. Let's see, any disagreement with that? Any other comments or questions? All right, I'll look for action. Oh, sorry, Councilwoman Lalum?
That's right. Um, my only question, maybe more of a caution would be if this is a five-year agreement and they put it into the operating, they can't use that as their budgeting item, you know, for five years from now, it may or may not be there. So just to caution the Wellness Center that, you know, this potential money could drop off at five years, so it would be more of a cautionary tale than, you know, put it in your budget and that's just going to be there every time.
Five-year thing. Good point. Anything else? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is authorization for the mayor to sign the planned service renewal with Johnson Controls for maintenance at City Hall. And, um, I'll just say that this is, um, we've had an agreement with Johnson Controls for many years, and, um, this would be a continuation of it, that it did go up, the cost went up three percent, about three percent, hundred sixty dollars. Um, and we're having a little issue now with the air conditioning, so we need to call them. They're not, um, yes, and, and they've been very responsive, this being an old building, they come out here a lot. So I'll look for a, a motion and second for approval. Moved by Councilwoman Woman Manti and second by Councilman Lalum. Any discussion or questions? Councilwoman Vilhauer?
I guess, what, what, what does this cover? I mean, what do we get out of our six thou, or fifty-seven hundred dollars?
Uh, well, Kristin, you want to answer that?
I'll kind of try to just keep it basic. Um, like I said, I, back in twenty seventeen, this was the first, the last time that you saw kind of the whole renewal package for the maintenance. And this is basically their general maintenance for the heating and the cooling, and they come in and I think they run their tests and kind of check everything over, as well as they're, they're kind of our on-call for when we have issues.
They get called out regularly.
Yes, yes, so.
I think they'll be called tomorrow morning. All right. So, any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number ten is authorization for the mayor to sign an agreement with Open Edge for credit card services. And I will look for a motion and second, then we'll have an action. We have a motion by Bueller, second by Solom. And, um, I think Terry's going to tell us about this?
Well, I'll start. Um, the only reason I'm up here is to take as much time, so Todd's got to stay longer. Sorry, Todd. Um, what this is, is if you remember a couple of months ago, the council approved the acquisition of new recreation facility software. The merchant or the credit card processor that we currently use is not one that's approved by them, um, just because it was more of a smaller, so Spencer went out and got quotes, proposals from the ones that Civic Rec does work with. Uh, Spence proposed or met with Jay and myself, and both Spencer, Jay and myself thought Open Edge was the best bang for the dollar. Um, on top of that, they have chips already with their hardware, our current is not required, so that would save a cost in future if all credit card processing required the chip. Spencer cannot be here tonight. The only reason I'm here is to let you know, we did bring this to the Park and Rec Board, um, Spencer presented to them, and they also are recommending to the council for approval. Specifics of the details, Pete, um, can sure give you that information. I, I don't understand at least percentages and per transaction, but Pete is well aware, if he wants to touch on anything.
All right, I'm filling in for Spencer today. Basically, um, the way I understand is that every credit card processor charges their fee. The rate that we get with Open Edge is point-three percent. So say for your debit card, uh, you get charged, or we get charged, one point-six percent, uh, it would only go up, or the processing fee for Open Edge is point-three percent, so it'd then be one point-nine, and then so on, for whatever different rates different cards offer, or have.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Something we got to do with somebody one way or the other?
Yep, and Spencer kind of gave me a little rundown of, uh, what he wants the council to know, and basically everything that Terry said. They're one of the few processors that work with Civic Rec that can get things done in the timeframe that we need to. That's another big thing too, because we're kind of, we're trying to get this done yet in two thousand and eighteen, so.
And we, we could have gone with Civic Rec providing this service, right? It was more expensive?
Yeah, right, and they're actually, they're partnering with Open Edge, um, separate to what we're doing, but that would be, that would be more, a higher cost.
Right.
So, but they, they do regularly work with Open Edge, and now they're partnering with them. We just kind of got under the deal.
Right, Spencer went through this in great detail.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, Kristin?
I'll let, uh, Terry and Pete can correct me if I'm wrong too, but, um, when this agreement first came before you as well, it was going to be an additional ten thousand dollars if our current credit card company that we have could not tie in and they had to do the work to tie that in. Um, after we went back and we looked at the credit card company we have, there would be those additional fees. So going with Open Edge and Civic Rec for this software, we won't see the ten thousand dollars.
That's probably what it was.
So.
But, yeah, using our current one was going to cost more. Councilman Robey?
Was there any termination fee with the existing vendor?
No, there's not. We have the, uh, the time in there to, to terminate, so.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number eleven is approval for the engineering department to add one additional staff position, and I would like to explain this. We had a very long-term employee, Roger Swen, who is a licensed surveyor, started out as an engineering technician for the City of Watertown over thirty years ago, and he was promoted partway through his term as, to the position of engineer. And so he, he started as a, like a grade five, and then was promoted up to a grade six. And, um, we're not, um, planning, we, we discussed this, um, amongst the staff about what would be best, um, not looking at replacing this position with, um, another engineer, but instead opening up a new position as an engineering tech. And so that's what we'll be doing, we'll be opening a grade five engineering tech position. That's the additional position, but we do, we don't have any intention of filling the vacant engineer position, that's not in the budget. So this creates a new engineering tech position. No, no, it's not filled. So we, we had three people, we had two techs and an engineer, now we've got two, two techs. And instead of filling the engineer position, we're going to create a third tech position and not fill the engineer position. So we will end up, when we're done, with three. We had three, we'll end up with three. We're not intending to have actually another position, we're not going to fill the engineer position. So. All right, I'll look for a motion and second for approval.
So moved.
Everybody. Motion by Bueller, second by Lalum. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item twelve is consideration of change order number three with Dunick, Inc. for the two thousand and eighteen sanitary sewer replacements project, number eighteen oh eight, for an increase of nine thousand six hundred seventy dollars for a total contract amount of five hundred eleven thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars. And this received the recommendation of the Public Works Finance and Safety Committee meeting, and we had discussion at that, um, meeting prior to this. So I'll look for a motion and second for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Albertson, second by Councilwoman Manti. Um, is there any discussion, or why don't we let Colin do a quick recap of what this is?
Yeah, this is, uh, we ran into a couple of issues. Um, you've seen, uh, previous change orders for the base of One Street. This one is covering six inches of millings for the hauling, the haul, they will go and scale, so weigh it, and then they will place the six inches of millings. Uh, that will be on Sixth Street Southeast. Um, and then it also covers, we ran into a service connection that was actually eight inches instead of six inches, which was, to the best of our knowledge, it was six inches. Um, the fitting was not, um, readily available, so they had to run up to Fargo to get that, and that covers this cost. Um, and that was for the street by McDonald's, Fourth Street. So that's where the nine thousand six hundred and seventy dollars comes from.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilman Lalum?
If, if these are our millings, why are we weighing them? Just to know how much-
Because we're paying them to place them, haul them and place them.
Great.
So they're good.
By the ton?
Yes. Right?
Yes, and we were asking per-hour rate for trucking instead, but they were not willing to do that because of scheduling reasons. Um, it was a long, complicated process, but they have to go get the material, they have to go to a scale, so they're driving further, and then they're going to place the material, and then, um, so we estimated at seven hundred and fifty tons, should be, um, plenty for six inches of millings, and it's going to give us a lot better base course underneath that road. Um, and hopefully, long-term, that road holds up better than a lot of the roads in town.
This is the road by McDonald's?
No, this one will be by Tokyo, Gril, yep.
All right, any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number fourteen is resolution number eighteen dash thirty-four, establishing the license fee for security guard employees of security guard licensees. Uh, I'll look for a motion second for approval. Moved by Manti. Second by Lalum. All right, Matt, will you explain what this is, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So our ordinance currently, well, to preface this, there's currently no security guard licensees on the books, if I understand correctly, but our ordinance, uh, contemplates that you could be an individual security guard or an employee of a security guard, and you'd both have to be licensed in the same way. But our fee resolution does not distinguish between the initial cost of a, a security guard company versus the cost of a security guard employee. So what this does is, it says, if you come forward as a security guard company, your initial cost currently under the fee resolution is five hundred dollars for the first year. Um, this provides that your employees then would only be fifty dollars for the first year rather than the five hundred dollars that it's currently, that would currently be required. So, we had a group come forward about a month ago, um, looking at potentially starting a security guard company and hiring, um, Lake Area Tech law enforcement students as security guards part-time, and when they saw that currently it'd be five hundred dollars per person, per employee, um, it would be cost prohibitive, and so we think that it, um, makes sense for that five hundred dollars to be, uh, charged to the company, and then a fifty-dollar per-employee charge is reasonable.
Councilman Danforth?
What's the purpose of the per-employee charge, Matt? Because I, the first thing I think of is, we talked about, not Uber, what's the other one? Lyft? And where, you know, Lyft gets charged the five hundred dollars, but the, the drivers don't. Why is this different than that? That's a good question, Matt, isn't it?
Well, currently, currently, if we didn't do this, uh, each employee would have to pay five hundred dollars. So this is just reducing the costs to fifty dollars.
I, I get it, but we're, actually, we're clarifying on one side of it, and then, but my point is if we're, where does the consistency and the need come from that makes Lyft or Uber different than this business?
Well, well, because, so in this business, as the security guard applicant, we're required to, the chief of police, in fact, I guess, is required to do an investigation. So we're required to do that on the person, on each individual licensee, so we're required to do work, whereas on Lyft, they do all the background check work.
Councilman Lalum?
Is that enough to cover the cost of the, of the investigation?
Yes, it's internal, it's actually not a, it's not an actual background check. By ordinance right now, it's not an actual background check, it's called an investigation by the chief of police. So, again, there's no, none currently on the books, so.
Kristin, did you want to say something?
I was just going to say that, when you asked about the background check, um, we do charge for like, I, I don't know if you're thinking like our liquor licenses and stuff, those are actually paid for by the person applying, but that's kind of a separate type of a background check, so, so this is internal, as Matt said.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is old business, and, uh, we do have some old business. Colin was going to give an update on the sidewalk issue that we had, where a property owner was, um, requesting that the city come in and repair some sidewalk, and, um, the council directed more information to be gathered. So, um, I will report back that I looked for, um, other situations where we had unimproved right-of-way such as this, with a sidewalk going through it, and I could only find one other place. And, uh, as far as I know, the city has never done any maintenance on that one. That one is unimproved Eighth Avenue, which is just south of Lincoln School, and I'm guessing Lincoln School does the maintenance on that, but they're adjacent to it, the city does not do the maintenance on that. Um, that was the only one, only one I could find. Uh, so this isn't, um, going to be something that happens very often. Uh, the other question was about how much it would cost, and, um, Colin did those numbers.
Yes, and, uh, we also did have some pictures, and last time, um, one of you asked me if we had been out there. I personally was not out there when these pictures were taken, but our staff were, at the time, um, to investigate a little bit. Um, so we did some, um, cost, um, analysis, I guess, and we talked with the contractor that currently has our sidewalk accessibility project. Um, for half- project. For half, okay. So for half of the driveway, because there's a seam there, this sidewalk all the way to the property line, so it would cover this panel, the sidewalk through there, and then the panel down here. And the total cost was $2,341.96. And that does not include any reinforcement in the driveway. So if we were to do that, that would be an additional cost. And that's based on our current contract prices. And I can, I'll flip through some pictures here. Yes. It only lets me do those two. So you can see the failure in the driveway here.
Okay, currently, we don't generally repair driveways for people when they fail. Driveways are in the public right-of-way, as this one is, and I'm not aware of any case where we've repaired driveways for people. The sidewalk is in the right-of-way, and if you're confused by this, I can draw a picture, I'm ready to do that, but the actual right-of-way, this isn't a unique case where we have right-of-way without a road in it. It is kind of unique that we have a bypassing sidewalk through there. But any part, by definition, any part of a public right-of-way, which is not used for the road, is considered the boulevard. And it's required to have a sidewalk on both sides of every right-of-way, every street in town. And the property owners are responsible for the maintenance of those. So in this case, the homeowner that has the driveway should have been required to extend the road before he was granted a building permit. But since it's the last lot on a road that doesn't go through right now, could go through in the future, it's city-owned property to the north. And if the city ever did extend that road, it's possible that those two property owners adjacent to it would be assessed for the construction of that road. And they would be required to pay for the construction and maintenance of the sidewalk on both sides. There'd be two sidewalks. The property owner on the east side would pay for the sidewalk on the east side. Property owner on the west side would pay for maintenance of the sidewalk on the west side. When the building permit was issued for this person that has the driveway in the right-of-way, that person was given permission to put their driveway in the right-of-way and not to have to extend the road. And the sidewalk was required at that time to go to the full length of his property, but to be put down the middle instead of on his side. And so that they didn't have to have two sidewalks where each side has to maintain a sidewalk. They're supposed to share in the maintenance of that sidewalk, and it says so on the building permit for that house. This is an unusual case. So whatever you would do here, it's probably hard to even imagine another case like this, but it isn't unlike any other corner lot, which has a sidewalk running north and south, and another one running east and west. And so to say that the city's responsible for maintenance is a dangerous precedent. We don't do maintenance on any sidewalks unless it's city property adjacent to it. Not right-of-way, but actual city property, like for instance, the water towers are city property. We do the maintenance on those sidewalks. The parks are city property. We do the maintenance on those. And this one's not different in that respect. The difference is there's no road in that right-of-way. Someday there may be, and then the single sidewalk will go away, and we'll probably have sidewalk on both sides. And since this was allowed to put in one sidewalk, the road cost would probably be assessed back to the adjacent property owners, but the city would probably build the sidewalk on either side because the property owners built it already once. So if you have any question about, if you think that you're inclined to have the city taxpayers pay for the repair in this situation, I would suggest that you make a very clear statement of how this is different and why we aren't planning to have to maintain everyone's sidewalk in the right-of-way, because all sidewalks are in the right-of-way. Is that clear? Councilman Danforth?
It is, Mary, I get it. But I think the thing that triggered my concern on this, first of all, I'm not sure I, again, it's just fundamentals, but I'm not sure I believe in the scenario of having to put that sidewalk in, but that's a separate issue, that long one leads to the park. But the thing that concerned me is, it's my understanding, I don't know if we're able to prove this or not, but that the city ordered and actually had constructed the segment of sidewalk that created the problem. Is that fair? That's what we're being told.
That is what we're being told, correct?
Don't know if we have record of that, right?
That would be pretty unusual, but we haven't been able to verify or shoot that theory down.
Yeah, we looked through every record that we would seem to, I mean, building permits, everything, and we cannot find.
There are sidewalks that have been built with public dollars. For instance, on the state projects, the sidewalk on 19th Street was built with state dollars. The property owners did not pay for that sidewalk, but they are responsible for the maintenance of those sidewalks, as is everyone else adjacent to a sidewalk in the public right-of-way.
Colin, is there any indication as, that, I know that was, what was communicated to us was that this work, in the manner in which it was done, is what created the problem, the failure. That's what was, I can't remember the gentleman's name, it was here, but Mr. Reese?
That is what Mr. Reese is saying.
Is there any indication that that might be true? I don't, you know, I've never been out there, I wouldn't have a clue. What would, what would, what would have been done here that would have caused this failure? I guess that's really the question.
I'm not saying that sidewalk is perfectly installed, because it's definitely not. It does not appear that there was any joints in the section on the west side of the driveway. But.
That's not the part that's failing, huh? It's the driveway that's failing.
It's the driving, driveway, sorry. And I, I guess there's, there's nothing I can say for sure why that would happen to the driveway. If anything, you can see that there's some cracks in the sidewalk. That's how I would see it fail. And that's what I would determine. It's trying to crack, and that's the point of a joint, is it allows a controlled crack instead of a random crack like this.
Sidewalk is going to crack? We expect concrete to crack.
I believe there's actual, this is more than cracking, isn't it? Isn't there settling or something that's taking place here?
The settling is on the driveway.
Well, it's in that corner. You can see it.
You can see it here.
Yeah, it's right there. Part of it's in the driveway, part of it's in the.
Well, that's the driveway.
Yeah, but if they ran, if they ran rebar into that and they didn't saw cut it to real alleviate the pressure, what happens? The rebar, while the concrete back there breaks, and the rebar pulls the rest of it down and finds a weak spot, cracks it.
I don't know if there's rebar in this concrete or not.
This is pretty old. I mean, if, it's older than our oldest aerial photo, so the records, we didn't keep any records. We don't have any from that long ago.
He did say that the city trucks do drive up and down that. So they're driving off the edge of that driveway, up to that park.
And part of what he's asking to be replaced is that sidewalk, about half of it there. Because that's, that's a part that is completely falling apart. The cracks are in the sidewalk, but the sidewalk is, it's just pieces. You know, it, it, it isn't a crack in the sidewalk. It's just shambles.
Yeah. And normally, knowing this, we would order it done. We've ordered many, many, many sidewalks that are in this condition, repaired by the adjacent property owner. That's our standard practice, is when we're made aware of a sidewalk which is in disrepair, we order the adjacent property owner to repair it. So if that's, if you want to do something different here, I think you need to make it clear, if that's a general policy change for all sidewalks in all public rights-of-way, or if this one is different in some way, specify that before you'd make that action.
Yeah, I think this one is different because Mr. Reese has indicated that the city did the job, and that we, as a city, didn't do a good job of it. You know, that's different than my stuff that I did out of my house. I did it, and I wouldn't expect the city to come and repair my driveway now if it breaks up.
How about on 19th Street where the city just put in thousands of feet? And if that fails 20 years later, like this one has, should the city rebuild it?
That's part of Mr. Reese's contention, is this failed within four to five years after it was installed.
Has he been asking for 20 years?
He claims he has.
And the city has, over and over again, just reiterated the standard position that sidewalks are to be maintained by the adjacent property owners.
I've never heard this coming to the council before.
I haven't found any record of him asking. And I personally haven't gone through emails of past engineers, I guess. But another thing, I don't, I can't tell for sure about the sidewalk, but it is even with this portion of the driveway, and it seems like this portion came up. So it looked like this was probably heaved, which caused some of the cracking. I don't know that for sure, but I mean, looking at a sidewalk like that, I would assume that they would match into a driveway, and it looks like it's pretty even on this corner.
Colin, will that, will that concrete crack, more prone to cracking with vehicles driving off the edge of it?
Probably, depending on the torque.
So if they're driving city trucks up and down there, that's probably where some of that cracking could have came from, potentially.
Yeah, and it could come from any vehicle. It's a driveway, so people are using it every day.
And if, just looking at this, and again, we don't have any record to show about the construction, but the way that it butts in, my, my thinking is that that curved sidewalk was probably installed with the road curb and gutter before that homeowner built his house. And then when the homeowner built his house, he was required to put, well, he had to have a driveway. He installed his driveway, and he installed per city requirements a sidewalk adjacent to his property within the public right-of-way, which is a standard requirement of all building permits. Because they look like they were poured right up to that sidewalk. It looks like the curved one was there first, and the side, but I mean, that's just what it looks like to me. And so I'm not thinking the city built that. I'm thinking that was probably built by the private property owner, which is normal. This isn't different.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Bueller?
You know, I would, I would find it a bit of a burden on the taxpayer if we do replace this, especially without any proof that the city had involvement, involvement with the construction. That's where I got an issue, because I do know that the premise for him to get this replaced when he was here was that it was substandard construction to begin with. And one of the things we were kind of looking for, too, was an engineering assessment to see if, if there's any way outwardly we could tell if this was constructed poorly, and apparently that's, we don't know that.
No.
You know, I think there is, there is some validity to John's concern, too, about vehicles driving over that, I suppose. But like you said, you've got vehicles there in the driveway that drive over that section as well, so.
It's really not that unusual. Other comments? Councilwoman Billhauer?
Colin, you're, you're a total asshole with what, $2,400 that I hear you saying? That's quite a bit more than, than the discussion that we had with Mr. Reese previously. I mean, any comments on that, or?
I'm just going off of our contract price, current, current contract with our, and usually we do have better prices than if someone were to have a small job like this. I, I can't speak on that behalf. I didn't get an independent contract, or a quote, I mean. So I guess I don't know who he talked to. I can't, I couldn't recall who he talked to. If, I don't know the quote he got. I just don't know.
What was the number that was shared with us? Wasn't it like 600 and something?
Like 550 for one piece and 650, 1,200 was what sticks in my mind.
Is, so is part of this just for my own good here? Part of, I'm assuming that's Mr. Reese's house?
Yes.
Okay, and so we've never heard from whoever it is on the right side? Never heard a word from them?
No. I will point out that Mr. Reese and the other property owner, whoever it is, are eligible for cost sharing, as all citizens in the city of Watertown are. And we do share in the cost when someone repairs their sidewalk at their own expense. The city contributes $2 a square foot to the cost, and he's eligible for that, just like everyone else. And we do get quite a bit of people taking advantage of that program to replace their sidewalks in the public right-of-way. They can't replace the sidewalks on their own property with that cost sharing. That's only for sidewalks in the public right-of-way. And every year, we do get many, many applicants taking advantage of that. It, it's maybe half or a third of the cost usually, that we have a fund for that. We take it right out of our sidewalk accessibility improvements budget. Councilwoman?
I think, and I don't disagree with anything as far as construction of sidewalks and, you know, those kind of things and precedent setting. I think what's happened up here, and I kind of verified it by talking to people all the way over to Herzog Street, there's been created a public perception that that property is the city's to maintain and control. I think the precedent was set by the trucks going through and the fact that at one time the city did mow that lawn on each side of it. And so I'm not saying that anybody's wrong. I'm saying that if you walked up to anybody, and not even anybody who lived near these people who could have, you know, fence post gossip, if you say, oh, boy, that sidewalk is really breaking up over there by the park, they'll say, yeah, I wish the city would come in and fix that.
As they do on lots of other areas. We get a lot of our sidewalk complaints are by the adjacent property owner requesting that the city come and repair it, and we respond. That's your responsibility. However, we will share the cost with you at 2 hours a square.
Right. These are, these are other people who live in, in the subdivision. So what I'm saying is that you're not wrong, and I don't disagree with the fact that we can't go around and fix everything. But in this case, it is a matter that public perception has been created, that that's a city track of whatever you want to call it, that the city is responsible to fix it, you know, and that kind of thing, because it goes to the park. And they've seen vehicles, they've seen mowers, that type of thing. So that's what I'm thinking is happening up there, is that it's, a public perception has been created about the city's role.
Well, and it isn't actually a designated park land. That is Derby Downs up there that the city acquired from the airport. And the right-of-way is separately platted. The right-of-way was part of Herzog Edition, platted, who knows, 30 years ago, 40 years ago. And that's probably when the road was put in.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just telling you about that.
Fact that it's a curved road isn't unique. There's all kinds of curved roads in this subdivision, particularly, if you zoom out, you can see a lot of them are curved like that. But this is the only one I saw that was unimproved right-of-way. That is different.
Chair?
Councilwoman Robey?
Just a couple of comments. I think Sarah makes a very good point. If we're going to go against what is standard, then what precedent do we set? So what is the anomaly in this scenario? I think that's the right question to ask. And driveways are made to be driven on, sidewalks are not. I have to ask about the point John makes. I do recall Mr. Reese talking about this. He said there's trucks that drive on there. If they're going up there maintaining all the time, city trucks, they're driving over a sidewalk, and they're doing that on a regular basis, would that make the sidewalk collapse earlier? Probably. Is that a valid point? I think that's really what we're boiling it down to, is what is the anomaly here? The anomaly is the truck traffic, from what I've heard.
I don't disagree with you, Don. I feel like if it was just the truck traffic breaking up this area, it would be more than just that corner. And I'm not, I'm not trying to like bring up a point, I'm not trying to argue any side, but I feel like you would see it down the whole path, and I don't think we're seeing that.
They'd probably straddle it.
He's probably straddling the sidewalk when he goes down there. So he's actually crossed right over the seam when he goes in. That's, that's kind of how I was looking at it.
All right. Well, I, I guess if, if you would like to make a motion that those taxpayers pay for this.
As kind of a point of order, so there's nothing on the agenda, so if, kind of reverting back to our ordinance, if two council members want this on a future agenda to take action on, contact Kristen and put it on the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Is there any other old business? Oh, Julie. No, that's another item. That's actually new business.
Hello?
Hi.
This is going to be the easiest thing you did all night, I hope. We talked about, a couple of months ago, the Convention and Visitors Bureau has a proposal in front of them from John Schmider with the Huddle Up Group. He's a sports tourism consultant. We had him come to a council meeting. He gave a presentation that is videotaped. Hopefully you all watched it. I came again, probably about three meetings ago, handed out the proposal to everybody, copies of his book. Hopefully you all had time to do your homework. I'm going to see John next week. I'm going to be in Phoenix for ESTO, which is a, a marketing conference. And we have a September one, which we'll probably have to push that back a little bit, start date for this. But the reason why I needed to come is I'm here for your blessing. I'm not going to ask you for any money right now, so you can, you know, don't sweat. But what will happen is, the, the proposal was for thirty-three thousand dollars for him to come in, and he's got a five-step process that he will take Watertown through from a SWOT analysis, identifying partnerships, opportunities, sponsors. He will interview, you know, twenty to thirty people that are stakeholders. He will, they will call and interview, you know, you guys, Park and Rec, the CBB, all of our board members, the Wellness Center, anywhere that we have floor space, the high school athletic director. And just to get a feel for what we have here, then they will do an assessment, not only on floor space, but also any of our natural resources, like our trail system, our lake, those types of things. Anything that can help us bring in more business and more sports tourism dollars. He'll then come and do a two-day presentation to the leaders and stakeholders. He does a public forum, which the general public can attend. They really put a ton of work into it, and they're very, I have a lot of confidence in them. So they would need a down payment of half of the thirty-three thousand dollars, and then there's five thousand we would set aside for travel. And he would need fifty percent of that down in the 2018 budget year, which the CBB is happy to do. We had initially thought a city partnership would be really great to do that more from the standpoint of just, just a team effort, the support of it. But we are also, the city is also looking at investing money into assessing the ice arena. And so the CBB board has given the okay to pay for the down payment for this ourselves, which will be in the area, depending on when the travel commences, of approximately sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. What I'm here today to ask you guys about is the support in 2019. With the end of the project, we will have another final payment that will come due, probably in January. And then some of you had also asked about keeping them on board to help us going forward. They've got a lot of really good relationships, and so these are people that will help us bring in a lot more sports tourism. And I think that once we have the analysis done, it just makes sense to form a partnership with them. So there would be a cost of six thousand dollars a year, five hundred dollars a month to maintain that partnership if we decide to do that. So really, I want, just want your support. I've put the budget together with Kristen, just kind of highlighting some things. We've got some big things next year coming in that are going to be additional costs for the CBB, so, which may include moving our office. We've got another full-time person, so, you know, our budget's going to look quite a bit different, so I just wanted to make sure before I hired John and his group that I have the support of the city council going forward. And we had figured in some costs of their group next year, but this year, rather than asking for the partnership and asking for funding, I, we, I believe can fit it into our budget, and there shouldn't be too much of a problem.
So are you asking for a commitment to budget in addition to the CBB money that we set aside every year? I've proposed a slight increase in the CBB. It's not what you requested, but we're, we're having some budget considerations that were restrained and, you know.
Sure.
It's like two or three percent. I don't remember what I proposed in there. Plus, the bid money goes straight to the CBB, and that's been dramatically increased. And so there's a, a big, that's the money, that's, bid money isn't really from us. The money that comes from the city coffers is usually just a lump of, like it was, two hundred seventy-seven thousand or something
Right.
in 2018. So are you asking for that plus a set aside for an additional sixteen thousand five hundred?
We have some additional costs next year. Some of them we may be able to pick up with some sponsorships, but we have the NSA championship tournament coming. The bid is giving us five thousand dollars for that. The bid money is used primarily for the South Dakota Tourism Co-op Program, which doubles our money that they put into it, which I really do credit our success to, reaching out and getting our word out to those people that are outside the, you know, our immediate area. So a lot of that is spent in marketing. We spent, you know, upwards of thirty-five thousand dollars in grants this year for different events that asked for money. And so that money is, it ends up being spoken for, so to speak, that way. But, so I had in there just some additional cost, but we do have some retained earnings as well. But we are looking also to move our offices, which would be, I'm working with Chris, because we are in another five-year lease, and we are out of room. And so in order to move forward adequately and be able to continue to grow, that's going to be a pretty large amount of money. And then we just have a lot going on next year with, you know, hospitality is going to cost us quite a bit with the championship coming in and things like that.
The council, though, doesn't approve your budget. They approve one number.
Right.
And so are you asking for an additional amount to be set aside in addition to that number that comes out of the BBB?
I had given Kristen a number, a total number.
So yes, so a second line item, because I don't have a second line item in the proposed budget. And the council won't act regardless of whether that's there or not. They could add something in, but they won't act on the budget until September.
No, I know that. I'm just here to let them know if I spend this money. Everyone seemed as though that they were in support of it, but no one has addressed any questions. And so they don't need to act on it. I just think that it's good for you guys to know what we're up to and how we're spending our money when it comes to thirty-eight thousand dollars.
I think it's a good investment, and I, it isn't, I, I just want to be clear on what you're asking, because if you put that in your budget, and that's what you're explaining, the council doesn't approve that.
Okay.
They only approve what's in the budget book, which is one number given to the CBB out of the BBB.
Right. I always forward to Kristen what we're looking for and why we're looking for it. And so I don't know where that, I've never seen it ever after that point.
We, we do actually too, if you look at the eighteen book, we do break down the CBB's budget. That was requested a couple of years ago. So I have eighteens in front of me. Nineteens will be handed out shortly, within the next couple of days. But we do break down what they are spending on salaries and the different advertising and marketing. So when you sent the budget request for nineteen, you had kind of two different numbers. A part of that was to take out of some of your reserves too, right?
Yes.
Okay, yep.
Right. And I, because I wanted, there was two items that were going to be just for this year. I didn't want it because I think the assumption sometimes is, is what the budget number is this year, it just turns into that next year, and that's not necessary. So, you know, there's just some years that there's going to be projects or different things that are going on. This is just a unique one, because we have to commit to John and Huddle Up Group before the end, well, soon, if we want to have everything complete.
But I, I don't know that the council can give you an answer before the budget hearings, and because there's, I mean, there's so many things that they're.
I mean, there's other ways around it. I guess my, my thought process is, is the partnership, I think, is going to be of value when we're bringing in other stakeholders and other city entities, like the Wellness Center and Park and Rec, and forming that team. So if, if we need to find another way around it, hopefully we can. But I just in support of it. If you guys are in support of it, then we can move forward. But I did figure out a way to pay for the first half of it without coming to you guys for any assistance, so.
And we can't give any guarantee till the hearings have. Councilman Billhauer?
I'm in support of the project, but can we even take any, any kind of action on this tonight? And then secondly, I mean, we've got, until our budget hearings take place, I don't know what we can tell you, Julie, at this point. Like, I'm in support of it, but I feel like our hands are tied immedi-, at this immediate time relative to your request.
Well, did everybody get a chance to look at the information? Are there any questions, so we can kind of hammer through that at least?
I, I looked at it probably four to six weeks ago, and that's a long time ago.
Councilman Roby?
We can't take any action. I understand that, but as the liaison, I do feel a need to speak here. I will just say that I, you know, we've got these new facilities, and the plan always was to leverage those facilities. I think this is one of the first steps in doing so. I know we've got budget issues we're going to be facing, but I just would make the comment that, you know, there is a return on investment here on this, I believe.
Right. I, I agree. I support it completely. I, I met John Schmider, and I, I believe this is money well-spent, but we can't promise right now. That's.
Well, if I get your support, we can, I always like to have a Plan B in my back pocket, so we can look at that. But we'll just have to see. We have other things that, you know, also have to take place, so maybe it's, maybe we stay huddled up in our office for another year and don't spend that, you know. And that probably won't happen right away either, so. I just, before we, I get into any kind of a commitment or conversation with him, I just need to kind of know how everybody feels about it, if there's questions. I didn't have anybody reach out to me personally, so I just am assuming that.
Julie, have you done reference checks on him and the business?
He is.
To talk to those that they have done service with and?
Yeah, yeah. And he's been, he's chaired the National Association of Sports Commissions. I think he's the only one that's ever done it twice. He's got a lot of connections. People speak very highly of him. I've talked to some of the, in the proposal, there's lists of his clients. I have talked to those individuals as well when we've met, and everybody's pretty happy with him. He delivers. And actually, he's, he's handed out a lot of really good advice for free up till now too, just because he's just that kind of guy. Kind of once you're, you know, in the family, I think you always are. I think he's just genuinely loves what he does, so. But yeah, he's, he comes very, very highly recommended from the industry.
I can vouch for that.
I would like to comment. I, I think we do need to, I agree with Don. I think with all these new facilities that we're trying to, to fill up and, and, you know, get as much activity from those and revenue generation as we can, I think, in my opinion, it is important for us to do what we can to support this initiative.
I know when we walked through the Wellness Center, John made a comment that that floor space should be busy every weekend. And he just, they've done so much of that. And so he's, they have a lot of ideas. There's just so many things that are new out there that unless you're in that business day in and day out, you don't really even know about. So I think he would be an incredible help, and we can get all those tax dollars rolling in a little bit heavier, because every time we have something new, it's, it's money in the bank.
And, and there is a testament to that. Our BBB and the bid funds are, they're doing well. Better than sales tax revenue.
Well, I wish I could take all the credit for it, but, and I have no idea why, but sometimes it's just better not to try and figure it out.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other old business? We have numerous items of new business, and just for information, I have numerous RFPs that we'll be issuing in the near future. And one Todd is here to talk about, where, there's an airport RFP, and RFP stands for Request for Proposals. There's no obligation in issuing an RFP. There's no obligation that we'll spend any money. The proposal will come back with spending money, and then you'll have action to take, to either accept the proposals or not. So Todd, you want to tell us about the airport one?
Sure. The FAA and DOT came up with a one billion dollar infrastructure program through the federal government this year for small and medium-sized airports. And it's still in the works right now. The paperwork's kind of all over the place. They're coming out with new updates every month. But the deadline for this is October thirty-first of this year. So as the mayor said, the RFP for engineering services would be our first step. And this would be for a terminal project. And essentially, the lesser scored projects was what this was meant for. They're kind of changing their ways going forward here with the wording and stuff like that. But I did talk to the FAA up in Bismarck, and I talked to the state DOT, and we are a channeling state where the money comes through. So they think we have a decent shot at moving our terminal project up from twenty-two, twenty-three to fiscal years nineteen, twenty is when this has to start. Federal fiscal year nineteen, twenty. This one billion dollars has to be spent, or at least started to be spent. The project has to keep moving, though, so.
So in order to get a bite of that big pot of money, we have to make application by the end of October. So we can't do that ourselves. We need a consultant to help us with that process, and that's what the Request for Proposals is. So about to send that out, and you'll hear back soon. Any questions for Todd? Okay, thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
And the, the next RFP that we're about to release, or actually, we, we've released, will be closing soon. We've requested proposals to do traffic impact study for Highway two twelve, which the DOT asked us to do. They basically wrote the RFP for us, and they have to approve it, but they, they want to know what the impact is to several changes that we've asked them to look at when they redo Phase Two of Highway two twelve. And those are, there are three things. The first one is to modify the intersection of Eleventh Street East with Highway two twelve to add either a driveway or a public street to the south. That's the Montgomery Furniture's building. It's private property to the south, but there's a signal there and kind of an unsafe location for their driveway. And, and we're looking at moving the driveway to be at the signal, which would make it safer. So that's one thing they're going to look at. Another thing is moving the signal from Thirteenth Street East to Fourteenth Street East, and that's the one that goes into the mall. And it's not normal to have a traffic signal go into private property like it does now, currently into the mall. They'd move it to a public street location, which is Fourteenth. Fourteenth Street leads to our premier softball complex. And it goes by Hy-Vee on a public road, so currently people cut through the mall to get to the signal. And this would, we think, be a pretty major improvement. But they won't do it unless this traffic impact study shows that it's the right thing to do. And then the third location is Seventeenth Street versus Nineteenth Street. Currently, we have. Currently, we have a difficult intersection to maneuver at 17th Street East, and the DOT doesn't like it. We really don't like it either. We're looking at a bypass route that would extend 10th Avenue South over between 17th Street East and 19th Street East. 19th Street East has a signal, so the road would come in and then go north to the signal. They aren't going to put another signal at 17th Street, and it probably warrants one with the difficulty of that intersection right now. Councilman Roby?
Just a quick question, on the 11th Street, is that just going to be into their property, or that, they actually still looking at maybe putting a street all the way through to Jensen?
Yeah, a street or a driveway, look at either, the impact of either. Now, there's pretty big ramifications to the cost of whether that's a public road or a driveway, but we've had, we've spoken about this over the years, it just doesn't seem feasible to do a public road there. They haven't been necessarily wanting to dedicate enough right-of-way for us to do a road correctly in that location. A driveway would serve the same purpose, but it wouldn't require dedication of land for a public right-of-way, and it wouldn't require setbacks for buildings. So if they just did a driveway in there, that probably served the same purpose to the public, and be safer for them. Right now, the driveway's right by their building, and it's supposed to be one-way, but it's difficult to regulate there. So we're, we've already put that RFP out. When is it due, do you remember when it's due back?
Monday.
Monday, okay. So we'll get those RFPs and quickly review them and look at how we would pay for them. I have no idea what it's going to cost, the DOT expects us to pay for that. So otherwise, we're going to get the same thing back that we have right now on Highway 212 when they reconstruct it, and it's just not great. So the third Request for Proposals that hasn't been released yet is an economic analysis for the ICE Arena project, and the, the purpose for that is to see what is the cost, what are the ramifications to us for building a pared-down facility versus a facility that's built out exactly like we want, and what are the long-term implications for revenue generation for us to be able to support that? Would it be self-supporting and how? So I think that's really needed before we go and accept any bids on building an ICE Arena. So I think it, my gut feeling is that the ICE Arena will generate a lot of really great impact on our community, and, but there are a lot of people that are, you know, and myself included, want to see the numbers, actually, not just a gut feeling, but an actual analysis. I'm not capable of doing that, and I don't know if anyone on our staff is, so we're going to get a proposal for doing that, and hopefully it won't be too expensive. We did get one proposal, which was written by a consultant, it was thirty-eight thousand dollars. They wrote the, the proposal. We've rewritten the Request for Proposals, and it, it's slightly different from what they gave us, so probably get a different number, and some more interest than just one. Any questions about that?
Mayor, on that particular one, when we say whether it would be self-supporting, are we talking about within its budget, or are we talking about as a city with improved tax?
Both, because...
Well, that's separate, the one comes direct to us and the other one...
Those are both things we need to look at.
Right.
Because the, the overall economic impact to our community is tremendous without generating a huge increase in sales tax revenue. The, the impact on the community is tremendous to the hotels, and to the restaurants, and to the stores, gas stations, all of those people definitely want us to build an ICE Arena because it helps them, and it doesn't necessarily cost them individually. But for us, we get a tiny percent of that revenue to help sustain the ICE Arena.
I just wanted to, just for clarity purposes, when we talk about self-supporting.
Yes.
What we're actually talking about.
Right.
So that...
Right.
The public understands.
Yes.
We're talking about the aggregate of the two of them.
Right.
All-in return.
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. Other comments or questions? Okay, there is another item of new business that Kristen wants to talk about.
No, no, not air conditioning, but this is just, no, this is just for informational purposes, I wanted to let the council know that we received notification that we will be going through our IRS audit. We have started to gather the information, and the auditor will be in the office August 20th and 21st, so we will begin that process, so, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other new business? Are there any liaison reports, Councilman Villar?
Uh, just a, a quick invitation, I think everybody got the email on this, or the invite on this. Next Monday afternoon, the Upper Big Sioux River Watershed Project is going to be taking a bus up through the watershed area. I went on that tour two, three years ago, very, very interesting, as far as projects that have been done along that area, and there is a tour on Monday afternoon. If anybody's interested, reach out to Roger Foot between now and, and Monday.
What time is that, Glenn?
It's one, one to five on Monday afternoon.
Thanks, Glenn. Any other liaison reports? Okay, the next item is executive session pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2, and we will have an executive session this evening in order to discuss and consult with legal counsel on a contractual matter, and we do expect to take action when we come out. So I'd look for a motion, second, to go into executive session. Moved by Councilman Y, second by Councilman Lalum. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Sarah, before I forget...